They shall give notice of date, time, and location of its meeting, other than special, emergency, or continued meetings at least three working days in advance by posting such meeting on its official public government website if any, placing such notice in a prominent public location at which notices are regularly posted, and placing such notice at the office of the clerk of the public body, or in the case that their public body has no clerk, the office of the chief administrator. Reasonable notice under the circumstances of special emergency or continued meetings shall be given contemporaneously with the notice provided to the members of the public body conducting the meeting. Ms. Jackson, has today's school board meeting been properly certified?
Yes, Dr. Gabriel, on April 7th, 2019, for Item 1, and May 2nd for Items 2 and 3, notice was provided fulfilling all criteria of Virginia Code Chapter 37.
Great, thank you, Ms. Jackson. I duly call this meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for coming in today for our work session. We're going to begin our session today with a moment of silence. This moment of silence is in remembrance of the victims of the horrific tragedy that happened on Friday in Virginia Beach, and we are also remembering the individuals who, some of which are students with Norfolk Public Schools, who lost their lives to gun violence. We are holding this silence for their family, their friends, and their colleagues. Dr. Boone?
Good afternoon, Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. I use this time now, again, as Dr. Gabriel has said, to offer our stand in solidarity with the families in Virginia Beach impacted and the coworkers and friends and others of those who were injured or tragically killed as a result of senseless gun violence, once again, in this country and now in our local community. Dr. Gabriel also mentioned the fact that we have lost the second teenage student to Norfolk, to gun violence in Norfolk Public Schools within the last month. And so, we know it up close and personal, unfortunately. There are faculty members within our schools who were impacted, who've been impacted by the deaths of the individuals in Virginia Beach. There are numerous people who have family, have very close friends, who are Norfolk Public Schools employees. We stood in solidarity with Virginia Beach on Monday by asking our faculty, staff, and students to wear blue for that purpose. I continue to wear blue today in honor of that work. And so, we have given support to our schools, to our employees, and we will continue to be in a place to assist those who are dealing with the impact of such a senseless tragedy. So, to our colleagues in Virginia Beach, know that Norfolk Public Schools is with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Boone. Okay, we'll now go ahead and start our work session. The first item on the agenda is for CTE and educational planning and facilities. This is an anticipated conversation that I know that many of you all are excited to have. This is primarily geared to be a board conversation. Did not ask the administration to provide any presentation because we've received information from them already as it relates to programs and items that are currently being done within Norfolk Technical Center and within each of the high schools and even into the middle schools. Today's discussion is going to focus on what this group has as far as vision, desire, goals, outcomes, next steps. And so, this is going to be a conversation, not the final conversation, for sure, but just the start of our conversation and how we want to carry the discussion going forward with regards to our career or technical education and with the career and technical high schools. What I'm going to do is just provide a brief timeline of some items that have been discussed in the past, and then I'm going to open up the floor to conversation so that every board member has the opportunity to speak. I'm going to go ahead and just put a initial limit on discussion between two to three minutes per each board member and kind of see how the discussion goes because I want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to share their thoughts. So, let's take it back to 2010. 2010, there was a task force established, and it was between the Greater Norfolk Council, the Virginian Pilot, Hampton Roads Community Foundation, Norfolk Public Schools, and the City of Norfolk. That's when the first conversation started with career and technical education. From that point in time, there was a visit to Worcester Technical, to Delaware, with a group of citizens and administrators to see what was being done elsewhere. In 2012, the city funded $500,000 for a career technical education planning study. The study was completed in 2013. It was done by RRMM Architects, and you all have a copy of that study. That's what was attached for today's presentation. There was a series of discussions that went back and forth, and in 2015, the school board unanimously endorsed CTE planning and a public charter formation. So, that was the last recorded vote that was documented for career and technical education. Since that point in time, there have been lots of discussions that have taken place. We have talked about our capital needs as it relates to Lake Taylor, but all of the five high schools, Booker T. and Maury specifically. We've also talked about program, programs in each of the schools, as we talked about the specialty programs. When those discussions came about, there was also an evolving discussion about the St. Paul's Quadrant. And that is when some of the conversations started to take place about whether or not a CTE high school would be an opportunity for development within Booker T. Washington High School within the St. Paul's Quadrant. There were some funds that were associated with that. And so, at this point in time, this is where we're going to kind of close that discussion and then open the discussion right now with us as a board. I think that we all desire and support career and technical education. We know it's a necessary item that we have to be prepared for and that we are truly responding to a call of action for the need of employment, but also for great opportunities for our students. When you are thinking about next steps in this process, there are some big topics that I want you to consider as you're processing the information and as we're listening to each other. That is program, that is selection of applicants, that is governing body, that is location. And also, keep in mind that we do not have the checkbook. The checkbook comes from the city, and whatever we do, we have to work together with the city, with what the program and the building, if that's what's going to be the case, what that will end up becoming. So, I frame our conversation with that. I'm going to open up the floor for hopefully a very good discussion. Thank you very much. Okay. Ms. Campson?
Thank you. First of all, Dr. Gabriel, thank you for sharing this information. For new board members who just came aboard almost a year ago, not new anymore, this information was something that I think we all needed to see. I know as a candidate, one of the big questions I continually got was what's happening with the CTE school? Why isn't the CTE school, why isn't it moving? It was a big issue, certainly in my ward, and I would imagine in the other wards because people have been waiting so long. And at that time, we were all assuming that it was at Lake Taylor. So, it's good to hear that, first of all, the board has been active with CTE. They had the big study done, really budgeted a good deal of money for that. So, that's good news to know that the board has indeed been doing something all along to get us to this point. Good to know that the vote was taken in 2015. Interesting to find out that that was the last vote. So, at this point, I would assume that that means that at this moment, the CTE has been approved by the Norfolk School Board to be located at Lake Taylor, which is certainly what I would be fully in support of, as long as I knew that all of our high schools were having their needs met. All five high schools. I know we have a lot of concerns about Maury and Booker T. Washington, dis-repairs both those schools. So, I would certainly want, as we continue this discussion and start building toward our CTE comprehensive high school, that we don't lose track of the fact that we want all five of our high schools to be safe and not leaking, well-maintained. That was the word I was looking for, much better than the not leaking one. That I would want part of that planning with the CTE school going in at Lake Taylor, that the schools, and I particularly have to mention Maury and Booker T. Washington, that those schools are brought up to a proper maintenance, especially in the situation with Maury where that's a total renovation or replacement. But Booker T. also has problems, roof problems, a lot of problems. So, I'd like to make sure that we always keep focused as we move forward with the CTE school in the making sure that all five high schools are properly taken care of and that all of those schools are safe and well-maintained for whichever students happen to be at those schools. So, thank you very much. This information was extremely helpful to me. I was, when I was reading over all this stuff Monday afternoon, I thought, whoa, this is really good information. I wish I'd had it even a year ago. So, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Basine?
So, I'm a little confused, to be honest, about the lack of administrative support in this presentation because the work has been ongoing. As far as I've known, being a board member since 2015, we had your comment about, you know, the CTE presentation that we received, I think, in April, was about our CTE programming in each of our high schools. But what we're talking about here today is our comprehensive CTE high school, and I think that's important, an important distinction. There have been a lot of changes that have occurred since the timeframe that you mentioned of going from a regional program to a local program, and I think that's an important distinction to be made when thinking about the information that you have in front of you. There have been a lot of discussions that have occurred over the last year. Unfortunately, you know, I would like, I guess, greater transparency around what those conversations have been. For instance, there was a meeting on October 18th with Bill Simons and some members of the community, which the full board has not had the opportunity to really hear what that discussion was. We received an updated supposed phone call on the night of October 18th, but the previous night on October 17th, as we had a board meeting and the question was asked, the board was not given the opportunity to know about that meeting or participate in the meeting. So, I still would like a full board discussion around what occurred that day. I've requested it a couple of times. So, would like to start there, and any other conversations that have been had with our city council leaders around what the vision might be or has been predetermined, if that is the right word for some of the discussions that we've been hearing have been going on. I would like more information about that. But I think, I think it is important to have administrative input because there has been ongoing work around the CTE high school since we last talked about it, and as we jointly, the former board jointly discussed having it at Booker T. Washington, which I believe was unanimous at the time. So, we have not given the superintendent any other direction other than that. So, I think it's really important that we have that discussion with this board as we move forward.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
I just wasn't clear on whether there was an actual vote to move to have the CTE at Booker T. Washington versus Lake Taylor. When I looked through the information that was provided to us, the study showed that Lake Taylor would be the better option, but I didn't see anything that said there was a vote for Lake Taylor or a vote for Booker T. So, I'd like to just understand a little bit more about the decisions that were made and how we got to where we are in that regard, where it's going to be. The other question, now, the questions I have, the question I have about the CTE, you might have to come back to me. I have to find my notes.
Okay. Okay. Let me, let me just briefly respond then to that. The, I don't recall a vote taking place either. I think that there was consensus around it, but I don't remember a motion, a second, or a vote.
For either?
For Booker T. For Lake Taylor, what the vote, I'm going to read you what the vote was. The vote was, this was done on March 18th of 2015, and this was based on the feasibility study, the one that you've taken a look at, the one that we all have. It was recommended move to endorse the principle of continued planning for the full-time academic career and technical high school and negotiate the development of the charter application for our review. So, it was in support of career technical high school. It doesn't specify Lake Taylor, but up to that point, that's what was discussed. So, just to put it all out there, that's what was discussed.
Yeah, there was, there was a mention of charter schools, but then it seemed like that was taken off the table. Not being a part of the previous meetings, I think we deserve a historical view, if you will, or a historical brief regarding what transpired. We can look at these charts and all that and make all kinds of conclusions, but not being privy to what the prior board did or said makes it difficult for us to pick up and carry forward. We can shift our intent, but without having that historical base, it just makes it difficult. One of the things I'd like to see as we move forward in this, because we know that fiscal resources are challenging, that we look into private-public partnerships when it comes to this.
Okay.
And another area of concern for me is how we construct the school, whether it would be choice, open, as in open to all, or is it going to be, I think we really have to have good discussion on that, or whether it's going to be local.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions?
All right. Who wants to go next?
So, CTE high school, for me, kind of goes all the way back from when I was at the Chamber. I mean, this has been a long conversation. I mean, as early as I can probably remember, '05, '06. I actually attended, went to Polytech, to Delaware to go on some of the tours, and this has been an ongoing discussion for a very long time. Booker T. Washington High School, based on the information that we received even at that particular point in time, was not the desired location, other than, based on the items that were placed here at several schools, I looked at all of them, but that Lake Taylor would be the ideal location because of the space, land, and for the particular laboratories that you would need for this particular center. And they even looked at the renovation versus building a brand-new school. I just think that there's, there was a major shift, and it's almost like we were moving somewhere, we were looking like we were going to Lake Taylor. The biggest issue that was always on the elephant in the room was we didn't have the funding. That's why we never moved to get this thing done, because we didn't have the funding. And in the initial report that was given back in 2010, it showed the escalated, based on a 3% increase every year, that this thing was going to cost more money. And now, we're over $100-plus million to just do it. We don't have the funding, and that is really the stickler at the issue of this. And so, just like the, our chair mentioned, it's got to be a lift that has to be in partnership and tandem with the city. They control the purse strings and really working with our private citizens. But I've received a lot of concern and respect that it just doesn't seem like we're moving. And I have attended some of the meetings of the Greater Norfolk Corporation to be able to sit and see and what some of their concerns are. But I think, for me, when I look at Booker T. Washington High School and just looking at CTE as a whole for us, just as our programs, and I've mentioned this before, about how we market it, how we put that information out there, we're doing great work, but we're not really communicating that out there. And I just, in representing Ward 3, which includes Norview and Booker T. Washington High School, I've received several individuals who are always getting different messages. Well, they're saying we're doing this, and it's like, where is that coming from? That one of the things that I do want to, you know, thinking about this coming in here today is that, just like what Maury had, when they, when we started looking at the educational planning, they pulled a task force together. They pulled a group of individuals from the community, the schools, to really be able to have that discussion and to be able to allow various voices to be at the table. And I think that the best use, and even for me looking at Booker T. Washington High School and representing that, is that we do the same thing and that we put that up for consideration, that we create some type of educational task force. I know we have one for the entire district, but specifically, as we begin to start looking at what that plan looks. I mean, I've heard, you know, we have an arts academy, then I've heard, you know, we've got STEAM. What does that look like? But most importantly, how do we include the community, those individuals who are invested? A lot of people, as it was mentioned, don't realize in order for a CTE high school, comprehensive CTE high school, to work, and all the studies have shown it, and then all the things have been brought to us, is that it has to be open, it has to be choice. And that's a concern for the community in Booker T. Washington in regards to the historical nature of that school, one, but then also that individuals may be excluded from being able to be a part of that, and that's a real concern. And it's one that I carry here today in regards to the ability to be able to establish a subkind of task force for Booker T. Washington High School that includes members of the community, alumni, those that are designated, that, you know, this board and then administration to really talk about that as we begin to start talking about their planning. And then also, looking at any of our schools, you know, as we start talking about our plans. But CTE, you know, I'm glad that we're having a full board discussion about it because it's just been one too many one-offs. It's been one too many side conversations and operating in silo. And so, I agree that this is a time that we're having this conversation. This board has not had a comprehensive conversation to talk about where we're going, and a lot of decisions were made in the prior board, and that's what we have right now. And so, I commend our chair for being able to put this on the agenda and for us to be able to have this conversation and share. But just some of my thoughts, particularly when it comes to Booker T., I'd like to be asked to be able to look at some type of smaller task force to bring that community together so that we don't, we can stop the misnomers of there's so many different messages going out, but that the community is a part of that and that we can really get them to champion and rally around what happens with their school and that they feel that their voices are being heard. And when we talk about CTE, wherever we're going to go, I am still a proponent of a comprehensive technical high school. That has not changed. But I also believe, and I thank Ms. Goshen for educating me in the respect of her attending meetings, but I've looked at other districts and looking at other things that are happening and what they're doing over in Hampton with their academies and how they're utilizing that. You know, the question gets asked a lot, why public schools? Why send our kids to public schools? And I really believe the things that we're doing in CTE and making sure that, and the message of making sure that our students are career and college ready is a thing that we have to put it out there. And so, I really like the way that Hampton Public Schools kind of brought together their academies and put it into a booklet, and it was something that the average person can look at it, understand it, you could sit down with your child, members of the community, and knew exactly what that was supposed to happen with. So, with that, I know timing, and we'll probably come back, but that's just my thoughts.
Ms. Martin?
My question is, the CTE committee, there was a committee, right? And it was meeting, what's the status of that?
So, there is a CTE advisory group.
Mm-hmm.
Dr. Boone, is Ms. Goshen, can she provide?
Sure, sure, yes.
I mean, a lot has been said around as though nothing has been occurring as it relates to the administration, and so, I think it's very important to Mr. Clayton's comments about bringing the community in. The chair and the vice chair know very clearly that in agenda planning, it was scheduled for us to do a full presentation on the comprehensive CTE high school to the, to the board and as such, the community that was pulled from the agenda, never rescheduled. I made a presentation at the request of the mayor to city council in December. The chair and the vice chair both attended that. But as far as the advisory work, the, the group of people who have been at this table on this work since 2010 have pretty much stayed at the table. Those are the business partners that have been helping us over time develop and strengthen the pathways, the coursework, as it relates to how do we ensure that we have strong CTE programs within our comprehensive schools, best practices for with thinking, as well as how do we structure the right workforce development through a comprehensive CTE high school? So, that, those business folks have been there all along. If you recall, in one of the smaller presentations we did to the board, Ms. Goshen shared those four pathways and explained very clearly then that those business partners were still part of all of that. They've never left the table, and we've continued to do the work. I agree that the funding, every time we've gotten to a point of who was going to pay for and what the costs were going to be, that's when the breakdown occurs. And so, it has to be not just a board commitment, but it has to be a community commitment to if it's going to be funded and when. And I think that's a critical piece.
Can I follow up to that? So, when was the last time that the advisory committee met?
I'll ask Ms. Goshen. Her advisory committee meets a couple of times. Do you want to come up, Ms. Goshen, if you mind? Not to stay, just to answer so that the microphone can pick up the question. She'll come up.
As she comes, you all may want to clarify the difference between the CTE steering committee, that is the public-private initiative that Ms. Smith spoke of, versus the CTE advisory committee, because I think we are using, we're having multiple discussions here, and I think it may be confusing folks around what we mean.
There's a CTE.
I'm talking about this high school project.
Okay.
So, which one is that?
Okay.
Typically, it was called the steering committee.
Steering committee?
Right.
Okay. So, when was, are they meeting still?
So, when I returned to the community as part of this work, there was a smaller steering committee that included the chair and the vice chair of the board, the mayor, the vice mayor, the city manager, and representatives from Greater Norfolk Corporation, and we were meeting monthly. The last meeting of that group was July of 18. I have not been a part of any discussion since then.
Okay. So, this, this funding issue, it's a big issue, I guess in that environment, who's making the ask? Like, who's in charge of the funding? Is it the city or is it?
The city funds all.
In charge of getting the, you know, the collaborative funding from the private sector, obviously, the city can speak for itself, but, and, you know, and money from the state, who's responsible for that?
Dr. Gabriel, joining the conversation. So, I don't, I think we need a more comprehensive historical context. The presentation that Dr. Boone mentioned that she made to council in December, I think would be a good presentation for all of us to go back and, and review. This, as has been stated, predated my time on the board, but when the reference was made to the presentation that was made back in 2015 or whenever it was, the Greater Norfolk Corporation has really been our private champion for this. And what they did and what we discussed at the 2015 meeting, there were concerns around trying to move some things forward. So, the Greater Norfolk Corporation came to the board and asked the board if we would support a resolution that included many of the things that Dr. Gabriel mentioned, including a charter-like governance and steering committee. It was not, at that time, determined, you know, what the actual structure would look like. And the idea behind that was by having the business community and now the was by having the business community and now the school board support, they would then go over to City Council with those two checks, so to speak, and say to the City Council, you all, we need you all to join in the effort as well so that we could move the project forward. So, there's been that Steering Committee, that collaboration for some time, and it wasn't even the Chair and the Vice Chair originally. It was the Chair and a, and a board designee was, was a part of that. And we've had different individuals who have served in that capacity. We've just gone through a lot of change. You know, City Manager Marcus Jones was carrying things. He moved. The discussion around Booker T. tied into many things. At one time, we used to have joint meetings between the, with the Chair and the Vice Chair of the School Board and the Superintendent, the Mayor and Vice Mayor, and the City Manager. And so, as we were working, I guess in 2017, a conversation came up during those discussions around some efforts that the city was looking at for Lake Taylor, issues that the city was looking at in terms of St. Paul's Quadrant and the Booker T. area footprint, some ongoing initiatives from the business community and the philanthropic community. And that's where the discussion emerged around trying to leverage catalytic projects and opportunities with the city and with the work of the School Board together. That also tied into, as we were doing our work around facilities, educational planning, as well as trying to have more resources from the city so that we could have capital to address our, our needs. That's where the support for the tax increase came to support operations and capital. And so, what the City Manager did and what the School Board approved in our previous budget was the recognition that as a result of these new resources, we had to come back to the table and prioritize. And so, these things tied with the work that Dr. Boone and her team led with cooperative strategies and others, and, and our team here around prioritizing the, the capital needs and the whole facilities condition index, and all those things have fit together. So, that's, that was that work. I don't know what, what the Steering Committee has done since that time, other than what Ms. Bassin mentioned earlier about Bill Simons coming in, who was at the San Antonio National School Board meeting, and I've sat in on his presentation. So I came back to the Steering Committee and recommended to the Steering Committee that we bring him in town and that he could come and have conversations with the business community, the community at large, and the School Board and the City Council, to really try to reframe and re-energize what a comprehensive CTE is, why it's important, and that's where those meetings came from. And then I know I've shared with the Board a Ju- July 2018 email that came from the City Manager, where at that time, the Steering Committee was moving forward. There have been architectural renderings that have been put together for the Booker T. site. There were discussions around re-engaging business community members to be a part of some governing structure or steering, steering committee. Ms. Goshen was designated from the School Board to partner with someone from the City Manager's office to put together a business brief and business plan for, for all of that. And for every reason, we've just haven't had any discussions about it until this time. And then, of course, recently, the, the Mayor was in the paper discussing the charter school piece, and at some point, I'd like to get some clarification on where we are with that discussion. And then I think I'd also like to get a briefing, understand that the Chair and the Vice Chair met with Principal over at Lake Taylor. So I'd also like to get an update on you all's visit there as well.
So, going back, just to respond, so what I'm hearing is that there, there's a lack of resources, and that is causing a lack of commitment on, on all three sides. No one's ready to really pull the trigger on this. And we're also, with the changeover, there's breakdown in information and commitment. And from, like you said, the city, you're...
That, that's not my characterization.
Well, I'm just saying, this is mine. This is what I'm, I, I'm an expert in collabor- in multi-sector collabora- collaboration, and this is what I'm hearing. And so, no one's really taking the lead on this. We, we need conveners from all three, all three sectors, and they seem to be very hesitant to pull the trigger and move forward. And so, there's something going on there. Maybe it's a lack of confidence, because this has been going on, there's been so much talk and no little action. Definitely, the lack of funding is a big deal. So there should be a funding plan in place. And so, one has to be responsible for that, or shared, shared responsibility, but that needs to be hashed out and be very specific.
You know, the original thought process when we were in our smaller meetings, and, you know, just to kind of go back to what Ms. Bassin was saying, you, the way that you discuss it is as if the board, as if members of the board were meeting and not including everybody. You have a board meeting, and then you have working groups. It was always designed as a working group so that it could, you could flesh through some things and, and kind of discuss things back and forth, and then be prepared to bring it for full discussion, okay? And so, there was high hopes that folks from the Greater Norfolk Corporation, even members of the board, Dr. Boone, City Council will be able to go up and petition to the state to have regenable, regional funds set aside to help with the capital needs of this building, that we would be serving not just our students, but there was thought that we would serve students from other divisions and even nighttime school for adult learners. Well, that funding source never came to fruition. And so, the model of a third, a third, and a third, a third from philanthropy, a third from maybe the state, and a third from the city, kind of went away. And so, where I feel that this conversation is, is that it doesn't stop this school division from committing what we already are doing with regards to career and technical education. It doesn't stop us from putting forth dynamic programs and to answer the needs of what employment, business partners, hospitality, healthcare, what those needs are. But to your point, we do have to have some type of organization for a goal with funding in order for this concept, if this is what we agree on, you know, after questions have been answered, if this is what we agree on. And the way that I look at it is I see what happened with the Governor's School for the Arts. And that is a program that had many different programs led by great instructors. They demonstrated success. They had a foundation, they, they have a foundation director, and then they have a program director. And then, essentially, once they got enough funds, they were able to secure the building that they have downtown. It didn't stop them from doing great performances, but they never used that as the, as the stopping point from impacting their success. And so, what I'm saying is that I don't have the funds. I've, the only conversations that I have had with the city were, do we have the funds or do we not have the funds? And I will tell you that the conversations that Mr. Clayton and I have had with, with the Mayor or Vice Mayor have never been about CTE in isolation. It's always been, we have a need for Maury, we have a need for Booker T. Washington, we have a need for our elementary schools, this is the facility index. What can we do with the resources we have in order to make the best decisions for our students? 'Cause that's who we're representing. And so, I have a specific ask that I would like as far as a next step as well, but I just wanna hear other comments. And with regards to our meeting at Lake Taylor High School, Mr. Clayton and I do school visits. I do school visits with Ms. Campson. We all do school visits. It was a school visit. I was incredibly impressed with what I saw at Lake Taylor High School. She was able to explain to me, who, when I go to Civic League meetings, I get asked all the time, what's going on? Are we doing career and technical high school, career and technical courses? And I was able to show them, or to learn about the collaboration between the IT Academy, artificial intelligence, how that blends with the military sciences, because I don't get it from our marketing. And I'm, 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 I'm just saying that it's, there are things that we need to be doing to promote our division, and we are doing that. But there are, sometimes if we don't know what the questions are that are being asked out in the community, we don't know how to respond. And so, I'm, I'm ready to be a champion for what we have. I was doing my part as a board member to learn more about it, so that I could speak about it truthfully and honestly. So.
Well, just, if I, are we still in discussion? So I don't think this is very functional. I think we really should follow better practice with the administration providing an update. Not asking for that now, but I do think that's a better process for us to follow. And I think we should go back and watch the presentation that was made in December before we make any additional, take any additional steps, 'cause I don't think this many discussion gives a full depth, that I think the, the amount of work and effort that individuals have put in, into this effort. I just, I just think that's good. I would say that on the, when the July eight, 2018 Steering Committee Agenda at that time, there was work being done on site plans and building plans for Booker T., including looking at the vertical building designs. There was discussion being led by the City Manager and the Superintendent on revising the plan and updates. There was a proposed discussion around preparation of 35% plans, which was to be led by the City Manager and Superintendent. There was continuing discussion around the governance and Steering Committee. The City Manager was recommending that we make sure that we included as many educational, higher educational institutions in the region as possible. There had been recruitment that had gone on. Dr. Boone with Newport News Ship, various members of the Steering Committee had reached out to different stakeholders to re-engage them with being a part of Steering Committee. There was an update being planned on the Business Plan Briefing Book, which I mentioned earlier. I think the, your description of the state funding is not quite accurate from the time that, that I was there. I know that there may have been some discussions since then, but there is true, there was some conversation around the regional piece, but the concept of a third, a third, a third, I mean, that just was just working discussion. So I think that as a, as a board, maybe in a joint meeting with City Council and with Greater Norfolk Corporation, if we're not gonna do the smaller group thing anymore, maybe we all just need to come together and talk through whether there's still a commitment, 'cause I believe that there is, and also get a, maybe get an update on all the work that was done with that Business Plan Briefing Book, and truly understand where we are so that if there are any gaps, and I think Ms. Martin's point about some expertise that she can bring to the table with working with multi-sector partners would be very helpful. But the commitment has always been there. The push, as I mentioned earlier, was there. I'm not, I can't speak to what's gone on since then, but I would hate to see us lose the opportunity. But if it's just the will of the board to just go with Lake Taylor, then I just think we should just say that and, you know, and, and just explain why that is. 'Cause I think what was done in 2013, it's been quite a bit of change from IKEA to
Outlets.
outlets and all kinds of things. So, I'll just leave it at that. But I do think we should be, get a full functioning presentation so we're all clear on the same page from the administration and the experts, rather than all of us here, none of whom have run a comprehensive CTE school, are experts in it, trying to just subject our limited knowledge and expertise to something of this scope and size and importance.
I have a quick question. Why has the committee stopped meeting? Why has it been a year?
The, the committee, funding.
So you just decided there's no funding, and everyone just stopped?
It was, it was, I will tell you that we, we had our discussions with Bill Simons. So when Mr. Jordan discussed the, a memo that was, or an email that was sent out by the City Manager, there was a, there was a group of citizens that felt that they were not appropriately at the table, and that was the Booker T. Washington community. And we felt that it was not appropriate to go ahead with making decisions that would directly affect the population. And these were decisions that were going to change what was gonna be offered at that school. We were having discussions about offering the arts and career and technical education, whether or not those two items could be held together at the same site, whether it would be application-only or live-in base. And so, when Bill Simons came, we made it a point to make sure that he actually spoke with that group, okay? So that they could feel like they had a voice in the conversation. And after that, quite honestly, I was very excited about next steps. But really, what was gonna happen thereafter was dependent on if we could raise $110 million. And I believe that Mr. Johnson, Tommy Johnson, tried, that's when he was trying to advocate on behalf of the division for some state funds, and that didn't come to fruition. And so, it then became apparent that if we didn't have the funds, and we were always trying to figure out, you know, what is the priority? Is it a Maury? Is it a CTE? Is it, you know, something else? Then, are we gonna meet just for the sake of meeting, or are we gonna try to stabilize and push forth the programs that we have, and then show that we can crawl before we walk, before we run? And then, once we do that, demonstrate buy-in. So.
So just, I hear mixed messages. So on the one hand, so first of all, when the idea of bringing Bill Simons in was to include Booker T. Washington and the community at large, the, the intent was to hold a town hall meeting or a series of meetings so the entire community, but specifically, folks who have connections to Booker T. would have the opportunity, and all of us together, to have the opportunity to hear the vision and, and understand the importance, and to dispel some concerns that were, that were out there. And that was determined back in March, April, when we first started talking about, maybe April, May, when we first started talking about bringing him here. The, the Mayor, you know, as part of the Council's budget discussions, is pushing, as I understand it, to try to move forward with trying to get a school done. And I thought that's where the whole conversation around the charter and the direction that he and the Council have given to the, to the manager. But then, but I thought I just heard you say we have to crawl before we walk, so I'm not clear on that. I, I'm not gonna talk anymore. I just think we need to have an expert presentation so the board can be on the same page, 'cause I just don't think this is gonna be productive for us.
Are we saying the charter will be a C, I mean, the CTE will be a charter?
It's, it's like, public-private partnership is, I think, the best way to, to discuss it. That it would have a, it would be a public-private partnership. I'll just, I'll just say that.
I told a fabrication.
The what?
I told a fabrication, 'cause I'm gonna say something again. The idea was, you wanna have it business-driven, 'cause you wanna make sure that the students are being served and educated, receiving the skills that they need in order to meet the demand for the workforce. So, part of the commitment is to have the business community at the table, to help drive some of that curriculum and build out work. So it's part of trying to make sure that the business community, the school community, and the City Council as well, and the philanthropic community were all invested into this public-private partnership. What was voted on in July 2015 was the concept of a beginning of a governance structure that would allow for the, the School Board to make some appointments to the, to the Committee, the City Council, the, the GNC and the philanthropic community. And they, working within the umbrella of the school system, would then be able to help move this down the road. So that's what that was considered, and it was a charter-like model. So that's what that was considered, and it was a charter-like model, kinda similar to what Green Run Academy is in Virginia Beach. School boards have the ability themselves to authorize some charters to provide flexibility in fundraising, innovation, and so forth. And that's what was being modeled.
But not governing this school.
Pardon me?
But not governing this school.
Well, that hadn't been determined.
That's, that is part of why we're having this discussion, because, you know, that's, that, that was what the vote was back in twenty fifteen. But right now, what we have is, there might be a difference of opinion right now. And so that's why we're having the discussion. You know, is that something that we wanna do? Do we have more questions that we need to seek information on for that? So, Mr. Clem.
Ms. Basing, did you have your hand up first?
Well, Mr. Jordan touched on some of it, but I do think it's incredibly important that the administration provide their comprehensive overview about what's been done and to provide that context, so we can make a, an informed decision going forward. Cause right now, I, I agree that I don't think we, we are all on the same page.
We don't have to be on the same page. That's why we're having the discussion right now. So this is, this is part of it. So.
But I think the work that has been done thus far is, is important for us to all have the same information, which I don't, don't feel that we have.
Mr. Clem.
So I went back to go look at the presentation that was done, that you and I both were there back in December, that Dr. Boone gave to city council about CTE. And it's same thing that I think we've seen, many of us, when we were onboarding. As new board members, the same presentation that we received, very close to it, as it broke down the different academies and pathways that we were creating. But the one thing that I saw that was missing in this, if we were at council, is where's the ask? Where's the, you know, what are we asking them to do? And there's nothing. It's just saying that CTE is a great thing, questions, answers, discussion. And I know that you were giving a presentation in December for that, which, from my understanding, I thought it was the mayor who had requested an update really about not just CTE, but how we were going to turn around Norfolk Public Schools, how we were doing that and how that processed. And then we found out about it through the agenda, cause we had no awareness of it, and then we showed up to support it. But I will also point that there are some things that I'm missing in the conversation that were, that were shared with us as board members about the move. You know what I mean? Cause it was, we were headed Lake Taylor High School, and then all of a sudden, the whole community, it was all announced at a board meeting that we were coming to Booker T. Washington High School. And some of the things that we heard in backdrop, now granted, there may have been conversations that we, as new board members, were not privy to. But one of the things that came out of that, and I didn't hear stated, was about the St. Paul's quadrant. And that there was a theory and a thought that there was additional funding opportunities by moving the school there. Are you looking at me? No, what I'm saying, I mean, we, we've had that.
I don't wanna interrupt you, but, yeah.
So there was discussion about that. So there was, no matter what, at the end of the day, there's the common thing. So when I hear the, all these different things and opinion, funding is a major issue. Placement is another issue. And I don't, and I, and I, I think that it would be unfair in this conversation not to address some of the concerns that the business community had in regards to the location and relocation of the school from Norview High School to Booker T. Washington. And also some of the additional things in respect of additional land that would need to be purchased, the amount of money. There was discussion about, there's a tower over there that need to be acquired. You know, that, so there, there's a whole bunch of different things that are in this discussion. So it's not just kinda like surface level. And, you know, and I'm glad that we're having this discussion and move here. But funding, I think, and when we look at it, at the end of the day, it's, the funding is the kinda the, the central point here. I'm not gonna say that Dr. Boone and Ms. Goshen, for years, cause I mean, when this was put in here, have not done an extensive amount of work. I would dare not say that. There, a lot has been done. And one of the things that we heard was about some of the programs that are happening in academies. I'd give you full credit on that. It's, those things are there. But how do we get this thing implemented, is what I'm really concerned about at this particular point. How do we get a building if we're gonna be committed? And I think that's the question. Are we gonna build a comprehensive career and technical high school? And if you build a comprehensive career and technical high school, there's some things that come along with that. That is, that it is going to be application-based. And so if you're doing that, I think that was the concern that came from Booker T. Washington High School. You selected our school. We're hearing that it's gonna be application-based, because Bill Simons and everybody else told us, that's the only way that this works, because the students have to have a commitment that they wanna be there. There's a contract and agreement that they sign, the parents and the students. That's the same thing that I heard when we came out of Polytech. I didn't go to the events at Worcester. I mean, Dr. Moon could speak to that. But those are the things. So there are a lot of things that are moving, and so, yes, we are trying at this particular point. And, and, you know, and I've heard in the past, you know, Ms. Jordan, there's a lot of stuff that we have. And we, and I think that every month, we've had some very important things to come before us and that we've had to deal with. But I'm glad that we're at this point now, and, but we have to send a message to council, to business community, and others, that one, this board, not that we have to, everyone has to be in total agreeance, but wherever the will of the board is, that we have commitment, where we're going with this, are we gonna seek funding? Where's it gonna go? Are we fully committed, saying it's gonna be a Booker T. Washington High School? Because that's the other thing, too. I just, um, cause I went back in here, you said that you sent an email, Mr. Jordan, back in July, that came from the city manager back in twenty eighteen about the...
No, I said an email was sent in July.
An email was sent, okay.
Hearing group.
To, okay. So, cause I was like, I don't have that one, cause even as a board member, I still don't know, all I see, have seen is Lake Taylor High School. I have never seen the drawing plans or anything for Booker T. Washington High School. I, have you all?
So may I?
That's what I'm saying.
That's what I've been trying to get you all to see.
If I may, in terms of Mr. Clem's characterization of the December meeting, you're correct. The mayor asked me to do two things, to talk about the status of MPS and to provide the conceptual view of what a comprehensive CTE high school is. That is why there was no location associated with that. That was the exact assignment. And as you and Dr. Gabriel were in attendance, you recall at the end of the presentation, the mayor also gave us what I termed a homework assignment, to come back and provide information to them on what it would take fiscally, financially, from soup to nuts to make it happen, in order to have that prepared for their board retreat. Ms. Goshen, Barry, Mr. Barry Bishop, myself, and others got together, worked on that information. We contacted the city the week prior to make sure it was in their agenda in time, and asked what format they wanted it in. And they said, oh, hold it. It's not on the council's agenda. So we did exactly what we were charged to do. And so included in that would have been the information as it relates to the site work with Booker T. I mean, and Dr. Gabriel should have some of that information and knowledge from that, because we vetted it in a couple of different places. There was even a time when the mayor suggested that the Addicts Theater could serve as the arts hub for the school, if we needed to scale back the cost within the full building. So all of that had been going on. And as far as having read the agenda, I did send the board an email to inform the board that I would be speaking at council.
We got it. Just, oh, I'm sorry. I was gonna clarify.
So you guys sit together, and the three of you, and probably others, sit together and put this agenda together, right? For today? Yeah. So you were all aware that this was gonna be on the agenda?
Yes.
Then why aren't we getting a presentation? Like, where's the presentation?
No, 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 no.
Dr. Gabriel directed administration, and I can show it in my agenda planning book, notebook, that administration was not to prepare anything. It was gonna be a board discussion.
This is board discussion, that's why. And, and I did send out emails to the entire board with attachments of previous presentations of what had been discussed already.
Yeah, but there's missing information still?
I mean, there's, there's a lot of information that's there. It's the feasibility study. It's, it's every, if, if you go onto Board Docs and query CTE discussion, everything that's there, that I could at least query is in that handout. And so as a board, we've not had that opportunity to have the discussion yet, and I didn't want to have, you know, lengthy presentation and then no time for discussion. Again, as I had said before, this is not a one-and-done discussion. So.
But that is the go-to place to get the information that we need, right? There's no missing information, or is there extra information?
What I would say is, based upon our conversation, if the consensus is to have Dr. Boone come back and do a timeline update for everyone, I'm more than happy to do that. But I thought we needed to have this conversation first, to figure out where we all are.
And, and I just wanna add to address your question. There's a lot of information up there, but the context in which that discussion has been around has changed, and that may not be reflected, such as in the feasibility, feasibility study. I mean, it, if, if one didn't know, you would have thought that it's the same that we're, same high school that we're talking about now, when it was, at that time, planned for a regional high school. So there are elements to it that unless you have that historical context, which Dr. Boone, you know, and the administration would be able to provide, it would be difficult to ascertain, you know, really where we are now, and then how do we move forward? So I, I do, I recommend that we do have that comprehensive overview to put all of that into context. And I think it'll make it much more understandable.
Yeah, I mean, and, Dr. Boone, you said you, in preparation for the board retreat, I mean, not board retreat, but city council's retreat, you had pulled together several individuals for a presentation. And I guess that would be the latest version of nuts and bolts of what, where we were at. That, that's what you were participating, I mean, what you were anticipating and presenting, right?
Well, at least providing it to them. We hadn't been told if we would be presenting, or if they just wanted the paper copy of the information. And that's why I was contacting to see what format.
So there's a document.
There, there are some components of it, yes.
So I think, if, if I may, if that, I think that would be a good starting point, just to figure out where we are. Since you had gotten to that particular point, it was gonna go to council, you know, not on the general, whatever it may be. But I think that's a good starting point for us, to be able to say, all right, everything that's in context, this is where we are today. And then to be able to go and look from there, and, you know, to, to really figure out where we wanna go and what direction.
And actually, it's dated, because it had a project timeline that was associated with a February delivery of that to board, so, to the council. So that report is now dated in terms of the project timeline.
But we could update it though, right?
Not unless we work with the architect again on that piece. I would prefer.
Oh, you're talking about the actual construction?
The project, the project timeline, yes.
Well, Ms. Kimson.
So let me be clear. So, Dr. Ben, what, there was a, a group that got together and they prepared the presentation. It was ready to go, and you were just calling to double-check whether they wanted it in paper, or they wanted you to present. So I would like to hear that, even if the timeline's a little different. The timeline's not as important as how it was all set up to go. I, I think that might give us, Ms. Basing, what we're looking for. I mean, don't you, what she was getting ready to give to the city council? Since it's already ready and, and done, the fact that the timeline is gonna be a little different. It was due in February, and that's not much. I mean, that would be something helpful to have. I mean, how long does that presentation, how long was it set to go?
We hadn't formatted it as timing for the actual presentation. It's quite comprehensive in terms of what it will take. What are the costs associated, the additional costs associated with that? We were ready to present it, some of that in August, and it's been ready since February.
Okay. We don't, we can, we have agenda planning tomorrow, actually, so we can...
Since it's already ready, there wouldn't even be extra work for Dr. Ben to have to do.
And that was with Booker T. And that was with Booker T.
Booker T. as the site. That was what the steering committee had been working toward.
I mean, I think that we pretty much, it sounds like we've decided today that, that we wanna have more discussion on the site. And so this would be, I, I'd like to hear it. I mean, I'm open to whatever. I just wanna, I just want us to move. Ten years has been a long time. Ten years has been a long time. It's time for some action now. I mean, as our expert in this kinda planning said, ten years is a long time.
Let me then bring, bring this discussion, which I think is good. It's good for us to have engaging discussion here. I've taken a lot of notes. What I'll do is, I'll try to synthesize what the notes are and make sure that we hit on some of the high asks from everybody, send it back out, make sure that Dr. Boone receives it, and, and then make sure that in agenda planning, we earmarks in time for that presentation. The other, the, the one request that I had was, I would like to have some type of a information book. I know that we already have a, a lot of this already, but something that's probably a little bit more comprehensive on what we offer with regards to our, and I, I just wrote this down with my notes, the, the different pathways that we already have in mind for the CTE high school. So like trades, healthcare, business IT. And I think there was Governor STEM. But what I would like to understand is, and have some type of a booklet on the coursework that's involved with each of the academies. Certificates that student will graduate with, partners that we have, that we are working with, like official partners. They schedule over four years. So when a student enters in that program, what are, what does the freshman, sophomore, junior, and senior year look like? And then what are the marketing tools that we're doing, whether it's diving back into sixth grade, videos, whatnot? I, I would like to have some better clarity on, on that. And, and I know I've seen it in bits and pieces, and it's been good, but kinda all brought together into one piece.
Just for clarity, are you, are you asking that for the CTE program, or are you asking that for the comprehensive CTE school?
I'm asking for what we have right now.
So we, we had a presentation, was it April?
I, I know that we've had a presentation already with regards to the, the different things, but, but it's, it, from what I've been told, and Dr. Boone, you can correct me, it, it needs to be updated.
I don't know what the "it" is. We did a pre, I'm looking, I was going through Board Docs now. We did a presentation, Ms. Goshen, you remember the fall presentation that we did to the board about some of our CTE? We'll look for it and see what's there.
It was December, I think December fifth, two thousand and eighteen.
Could I? We, we had, we listened to a very comprehensive update that we received from Ms. Goshen on the CTE program.
Right, the program.
I think at this point, I'd like to have that kind of presentation on what the CTE comprehensive high school. I'd like us to, to get focused on that. I mean, it seems, though, under Ms. Goshen's guidance, that our CTE program, the general program that's throughout the schools, is coming along. And good job with that. But I, I, I think it's time for us to start focusing on the CTE high, comprehensive high school, or we're never gonna get one.
Well, a lot of that, yeah.
Well, I don't mean separate them, I don't mean separate them for the way they're gonna operate. But for right now, I've heard, I know, I, I mean, we had a extremely thorough one. I was not at the city council meeting, but I was at home, watching it livestreamed, and it was a lot of the same. Another overview of, of what's currently in place with the CTE program, which was wonderful, but I'm, I've heard it now twice. I'm ready to hear CTE comprehensive high school.
Okay. So, so, so why don't we do this then? Why don't we schedule the presentation that Dr. Boone and team will make for that? But I do want to get a deeper dive into more than just what the presentation has that, that I saw in December with, when a student enters in as a freshman, what does it look like? So that way we can start planning. Yeah, the high school model. Yeah. So, all right.
Just, if the, I'll resend to the board again, the links to the discussions that the board had in work sessions, out in the public, around the work. Where we went and how we got to the point around Booker T. as the site. Also, we'll share with you all, all the emails that I have surrounding that, any other materials that I have, so that you can have that context and, and, and any questions that may come up as a, as a result of that. But there was, I keep hearing this theme about the shift. We, we talked about it as a board. We talked about it in collaboration with our Greater Norfolk partners. We talked about it with the council and the mayor. And I can, I'll even send you an email when, the, the day I was gonna do it, and I sent an email to Mr. Tommy Johnson, said, hey, are we still in sync? I'm gonna make this update today. He emailed me back. He said, yes, we're all on board. So I'll share all of that information with you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion.
I was just going to add that if you're interested in, you know, our career and technical classes, I mean, that's in the course sequence guide, too. So if that's something that might be helpful for you.
All right, moving on. Dr. Boone, capital CIP update.
Ask Ms. Ingram to come forward. As we shared with the board, we will be bringing forth today the information on the capital improvement projects. Ms. Ingram is gonna walk us through a presentation that, again, clarifies the difference between our CIP dollars and the regular maintenance dollars that show up in our operating budget. And projects that have been... and projects that have been outlined and earmarked going forward, and some that have been closed. So, Ms. Ingram is getting the clicker.
Madam Chair, can I ask a quick question before I hear this? We have the ongoing maintenance, we have capital improvement, and I guess, and this is just my lack of, of understanding the difference, when I hear capital improvement, I'm thinking build a school, or renovate a school. And when I look at this, it looks like it's like under a certain amount, so is there, so there's a third level? What would that third level be called if this is capital improvement?
It's, it's still capital, but that is capital for construction or rehab.
Right.
So that falls in a different category.
But it's still called capital?
It's called capital.
Oh, okay, 'cause I thought I was missing something.
Ms. Ingram is gonna walk us through the definitions of the, the couple of ones.
Thank you very much.
As part of the presentation.
Capital being over five thousand dollars?
She'll walk us through, if you allow us to do the presentation rather than piecemeal it. Ms. Ingram?
Good afternoon, Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Clanton, school board members, and Dr. Boone. This afternoon, I'll be giving you an update on our capital improvement projects, and this is what I will be going over, topics for discussion, is what are capital improvement projects, the status of our capital improvement projects. We call them CIP, going from CIP 12 through 17, and then showing you what 18, 19, and identifying projects for 2020, the next school year. So a capital improvement project is a specific and identifiable improvement purpose, or a purpose by which expenditures are proposed within the capital budget or capital improvement fund. Funds are for new construction, renovations, major repairs and maintenance, and improvements to infrastructure. The cost threshold for these projects is twenty-five thousand dollars or higher.
Let me, let me interject there, in terms of Ms. Camson's original question. So, capital improvement, you see here, it identifies new construction also, but that comes in a separate, we're talking about a much smaller dollar amount, roughly three million dollars annually, that we are talk, discussing in this presentation. As you recall, we're updating our facilities master plan that the board would then decide, we would make a set of recommendations through the facilities committee, and then the board would endorse what projects they wanted to put forward to council as the next major new construction or renovation project.
So maybe I need to, my own terminology, call it major capital, and say, it looks like this is twenty-five thousand or less.
Well, this includes all, capital is both. It has to be at least twenty-five thousand, can go into the millions.
Oh, okay.
But what we're discussing here is that three million dollars that we received that has a minimum threshold of twenty-five thousand.
Okay, thank you very much for the clarification.
And it's, like Dr. Boone said, it's that deferred maintenance capital, when we, when you voted on the budget that went to city council, we had a capital at CIP budget.
Right.
And they give us that three million dollars, that is what I'm reporting on for each fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
From a historical perspective, in May of 2016, I gave a report to the board with a comprehensive review and the status of our CIP 12 through CIP 18 funding. Our records were reconciled with the city. What happened at that time, we had some old CIP projects that had been closed, but the funding was still there, they had not been repurposed. So we went through this process and reconciled, and we got with city, and our books agreed with the city's books. So once we came to that agreement, 1.2 million, there was an old project was identified to assist with the funding for the FF and E, or the, for the PPA schools, which we talked about, which the board approved to request a reappropriation for. We got 1.2 million dollars for that. Just as an update on that, the letter has been submitted to city council, and I'm told it's scheduled for city council vote on January, June the 25th, I believe.
And that's where the audited fund balance?
So it was agreed that we will keep all of the funding from CIP 12 forward, and as an FYI, between CIP 12 and CIP 15 at that time, we had approximately 2.3 million dollars that were available to be spent. So we were in the, have been in the process during that time of identifying additional projects, closing out the projects, and when they are closed out, we repurpose those for a different project.
So, if I can, so when we say close out, that means that we've completed the project and we just had leftover funds, right?
We completed the projects, it probably came in for less than what we estimated it to be. Once we paid all the final bills, we can release any outstanding POs, close that back, it becomes available funds to then, for us to identify additional projects to spend. There it is. So for CIP 12, as of May 28th, the appropriation we received was three million dollars. What we had expended to date was 2,967,865, so we have an encumbrance left of thirty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. And that's, and what I'm showing you is the encumbrance is for thirty thousand dollars for the Lake Taylor High School roof replacement project. We have been over three phases trying to replace the roof at Lake Taylor High School.
That's a huge building.
So, the project that is outstanding now, where you're seeing that we have monies left over, this money was left over from phase two, that will be used for phase three to complete the roofing, then we will have a fully warranted roof on Lake Taylor.
And that'll happen this coming year then, since the money's here?
That's in progress yet, for right now, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And also, to finish out the, the thirty-two thousand that we had, we also encumbered funds for a Bayview chiller replacement. And you may wanna say, well, why is it only 1,0983, 982, because that's all the funds were left in CIP 12. What I've been trying to do is to spend all the old money first, and then move up and close out those years.
Think about it almost like a snowball effect. You, you pay off one, then you roll the money into the next opportunities, and so you will see that in the next several slides of where we're rolling money up to get to the total amount that's needed, again, but, but not leaving money all the way back from 12, just sitting there. So we're rolling it up, we understand, we know what the, the projected cost of the, the projects are, and this allows us to roll it into that, and it's been, encumber those funds.
How much is a chiller? It's pretty expensive.
It could be a comprehensive, two hundred thousand, one hundred and fifty, two hundred. And that's what I'm saying, it's only a small amount here because I'm using the old money first, and you're gonna see, like, for the Bayview chillers across multiple capital project years.
So we're just pulling money. So, think about, again, the snowball effect, or, or, or a checking account.
Oh, for the chiller, that's a perfect note.
I know. Appreciate. But, but again, the idea is that we need to fully close out these fiscal year proj, uh, funds. And so, yes, one hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars for a chiller, nineteen hundred is gonna come from these dollars, and then you, when we get toward this, you'll see where we've taken care of the full cost of funding the various projects.
Thinking about that, and the fact that there's probably other chillers need to be replaced, right?
It's all in here.
You can see a whole lot of chillers.
Yeah.
In this presentation. Okay, the next, I'm going to CIP 13, that year we also got three million dollars. No, this one I just finished talking about, wasn't it? No?
I don't know, this is a new one.
It's, the dollar amounts are pretty much the same, but we had thirty-five thousand, four sixty, and the money here again, like in 12, there was some money left that's going towards the Lake Taylor High School roof project, twenty thousand, and then fifteen thousand left of the twenty, thirty-five was to go towards the Bayview chiller. When I get up to probably CIP 16, you will see where we will have encumbered all of the funds for the chiller.
And the roof also, or are you still, how much is that?
Roof will come through 18. If, please, if you all, give us a chance to get into it. If you, if you had a chance to review the presentation, it was posted Friday, you will begin to see all of these collections of where the money goes, and then what we're projecting to use for the FY 20 fund, so. We, we, we promise we're gonna get there.
We will get there. CIP 14, again, we got three million dollars, we spent 2.9 million, and we encumbered thirty-one thousand, and we have available balance of forty-two. So, thirty-one thousand dollars, the encumbrance here again goes towards the Bayview chiller. We had a balance left from the Maury Ed specs than we, we did phase one. We have not closed that project out because there is a second component, so we will use those funds for the second component, and identify funding from other areas to complete that component of phase two.
And so that's why it's listed as available dollars, but available to that particular project.
And then also, twenty-nine thousand, three oh five, is a new project we have identified is to replace the boiler at Monroe. So later on, you, I'll share with you the total cost of the boiler and where the, it's coming from. CIP 15, we got 3.3 million dollars. We have spent to date three, little, almost 3.1 million dollars, and it says available budget. The projects that we have identified to use up that 221,000 is to complete the Monroe boiler. So if I go back to CIP 14, where we had twenty-nine thousand, three oh five, we add the thirty-nine thousand, six sixty-five from CIP 15, the total cost to replace that boiler is sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. Also, the difference between that and the, and the 221 is 181,289. In our CIP 19 budget, we have like five chillers with an estimated cost of, for replacement. We have now gotten the bits in and what it's gonna truly cost, so we need an additional 181,000 dollars. So I went back to CIP 15, so I can use up all of the CIP 15 money to go with the money for CIP 19, to do the chiller replacement. And when I get into 19, I would tell you where those chillers are located. Looking very good for me. CIP 16, we received 3.75 million dollars, expended to date is almost 2.7 million, we have eighty-seven thousand dollars in encumbrances, and 995,000 dollars of available budget. In CIP 16, we have several projects that were placed on hold. Poplar Halls, some work at Larry Moore, and we were placing them on hold pending discussion from the education planning and the recommendation. So, you know, we voted to close Poplar Hall, so those funds would now become available to put towards another project. And you will be seeing how we are proposing to use the additional funding from Larry Moore. The active projects, what is going on currently in CIP 16 is make sure we repair at Larry Moore, fifty thousand dollars. Bayview chiller replacements, six thousand dollars to complete, so a total cost for the chiller replacement for Bayview is 200,000. And if I take you back, remember, we had money in CIP 12, 13, 14, and 16, and if we add all of those up, the total cost for the Bayview chiller replacement is 200,000 dollars.
So now they're cool over there, right?
When it gets in, it will be.
Not yet. Going in soon?
They're, they're in, the, the chiller is in there, I think.
Bayview, Bayview's one is in.
Yeah, that's what I'm-
Now we can pay for it.
Yeah, Bayview is the case. You're not hot, hot, the kids and teachers got some cool one.
Bayview is one of the ones that actually got done this year.
Yay.
CIP 17, we received four million dollars from the city. Expenditures to date is 1.5 million, encumbrances 56,000, with available funds of 2.4. Here again, Poplar Hall's roof replacement was over multiple years. In 16, it was for the design work to be done, and then in 17, it was the actual dollars to replace the roof. So those, both of those projects were placed on hold. Sewell's Point, there, the, the project there was expand the parking lot, but with the situation that Sewell's Point with, I think they have some underground irrigation systems and things of that nature, that we cannot expand it. So what we're gonna do is resurface the existing parking lot. When we went back out there and reassessed it, what we found out was that staff was parking in areas that make it look like we didn't have enough parking space because they wanna be closer to the building. So when we actually did the assessment, there is enough parking slots in the existing space, so there is no need to expand. And we can't anyway because of design work that the city is gonna be requiring, that makes it almost impossible to expand it there. So we will be repaving the parking lot, the existing side.
Can I ask a question about that? So, the park, the parking lot that you're talking about is the U-shaped drop-off parking lot, or are you also including the big mud parking lot on the other side? Are those both official?
I can't tell you specifically. Mr. Johnson was gonna be here tonight, but he's sick to share you specifically where it is. But a lot of times, people are parking in areas, creating spots that really should not be parking.
The, the main parking lot at Sewell's Point is when you approach the school from Hampton Boulevard, is that first large lot.
I think that's what they're talking about.
That's the main parking lot. And so, the condition of the lot is such that, again, as, as Ms. Ingram was saying, there, there are spaces, but the back row space is a little bit further from the front, from the building's entrance than, than some of the others, so part, staff sometime gone around to the other side of the building. The front portion of the building is really the, the drop-off. So that's not designed as long-term parking, that's, you know, where we come through. So, the, the request had been to expand it, but then, as we said, found out that there, there are adequate number of spaces there, and the in-ground work and the irrigation systems and other things would make the cost prohibitive. So we're gonna improve.
Drop off, or drop off and pick up? It's a big jam there because you can't move, no one can get in or out until that line clears.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, it's not designed as long-term parking. So you need to drop and roll. And what's happening, you know how, you know how we do when we drop off our children, their conversation, sometimes somebody wants to run in the building. So it's that drop-off piece that's not as efficient, but we're gonna have to work on that.
Yeah, that's different than the actual parking lot. CIP 18, we received 2 million dollars, expended to date almost 75,000, encumbered 267 with 1.6 million dollars. And we have active projects that are ongoing in various stages. Some of them are in design work, where one is just, it's about 90% complete, will be ready for bid or advertisement. Another one we have going out for bid, and just pending final closure out of several different projects to determine where we can identify additional funds to go toward additional projects. What I'm doing differently with 18 to 19 is giving you a list of the projects that are currently active. So for CIP 18, these are the projects that have been identified for the 2 million dollars. The masonry restoration at Larry Moore, fire lawn system at Ruffner, a chiller replacement at Willoughby, Booker T. Washington High School gym bleacher replacements, Terrelton chiller, Willard repaved the bus lane and service loop, Lake Taylor High School auditor air handling unit replacement, and these are the areas that will complete Lake Taylor High School for the roof replacement. In total, what we have identified funding for this, this section of phase three of Lake Taylor is 850,000 dollars to complete that phase. CIP 19, we received 6 million dollars. Eighty-two have been expended, 572 had been encumbered, and 5.3 million is available. Here again, these projects are in various different phases, so these are the projects that will be done with CIP 19. Willard Elementary School roof replacement, roof replacement at Facilities Complex, Granby High School, I mean, elementary school, reseal the foam roof, and I think it's like six chiller replacement, one at Academy for Discovery, and Lakewood, Taylor Elementary, Ruffner Middle, Blair Middle School, Norview High School, Lake Taylor Middle has cooling towel replacement, transportation has resurf, resurfaced the bus parking lot at NTC, the bus loop and storm drain repairs, Lake Taylor High School, the bus loop and storm drain repairs, three boiler replacement at Fair Lawn, and two boiler replacement at Tywha Park.
Let me also interject one thing about the significance of the Norview High School chiller replacement. You'll recall when we completed the facility condition index for all of our schools that were 15 years and older, because that's generally the, the industry's threshold of when systems begin to fail. Norview High School is right at that threshold, and so now we see the chiller due for replacement. So that's a, a, a great example of when that, of how true the industry expectations are around those 15 years, so.
Question about, so the chillers, when we see them in here due for chiller replacement, it doesn't mean that they're sitting there with no working chiller? It just means that it's deteriorating and, and they're probably repairing it a lot?
Yes, and it's on its last leg. And in some instances, we have rentals in place.
Right, we bring in a temporary chiller.
When they break, we have contracts in place to bring in a temporary chiller.
Okay.
Until we can get the replacement in. Until we can get the replacement in. Okay, the next page is a summary of eight years from CIP twelve through CIP nineteen of the funding that we have received in deferred maintenance. And it's a summary of what I just showed you individually by project year of what's spent and what's encumbered and what's available to spend this ten million dollars. What I would also like you to keep in mind is of that ten million dollars, it seemed like a lot, but we have a lot of projects in process. And three, over three million of that were projects that were being held, like the Poplar Hall's roof, so many other things. So it's not like we are not spending the dollars. There, there's a story behind all of this. So we do have identified projects for the bulk of those, except those projects that were on hold. What I will be showing you after this slide is what we are proposing to do with the funds that we will be getting from the city for 2020. We anticipated to get three million dollars. What we have proposing is to do a roof replacement at Larry Moore, to do window replacement at Larry Moore at Tyewater Park, to replace the classroom unit ventilators, same as St. Helena. St. Helena will also get a chiller replacement at Willoughby to replace the classroom unit ventilators, resurface the parking lot at Willoughby, resurface the parking lot at Lake Taylor Middle School, replace gym bleachers at Lakewood, at Rosemont, replace the gym bleachers, and at Crossroads, remove the green roof and repair leaks there. And if you will see those projects, I'm sorry. Those projects total five million dollars, which is more than the three million that we'll be getting from the city. But like I said, we also have projects that are on hold that we can determine how much to be released to go in towards this. And the list continues to grow. We have other projects that we were waiting to get costs from. Since I had put this out last Friday, Monday, I received cost estimates for replacing the annex at Lindenwood. That's three hundred thousand dollars. And then to look at student parking lot, resurfaced it at Maury, that's four hundred thousand dollars that could be added to the list. So what I have as next steps are we continue to vet the projects that I'm presenting to you tonight as recommendation. There will be discussion and vetting as to how to move forward with that, such that early, within June, August timeframe, come to a decision as to which projects will be funded for next year so that we can get the budgets loaded, so they can begin the work to do the design work, get the cost, real estimates and so forth. We're going to continue monitoring and looking at those projects that are active. When we, they are complete and we realize that we have made the final payments, if there are any funds left, then we will take those funds and identify new projects to continue to do with the deferred maintenance dollars that we receive from the city.
And that's basically it. Okay, so that covers the next steps then?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. That was a very good presentation. Appreciate that. All right, questions? Okay.
Miss Basine, Lauren, have a question?
No, no. I can move on because I'm looking at the plaque and realizing that we need to.
So we, we heard some advocacy for Larry Moore. Are these items that are listed here, are they probably the highest priority, would address some of the concerns that have been brought forward?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, replacing the roof will mitigate the water intrusion.
Right, okay.
And so we're doing the masonry work now. Replacing the windows will also help with the building envelope, the comfort, the heating and the cooling. And so all of this, the roof, windows, doors, masonry deal with the building envelope. So once we improve that, the comfort level in the building will improve.
I figured, okay. And then my second question was around the Maury Ed specs. I believe you said, if I heard correctly, there is a second component to that, so this is what we're.
I think there was supposed to have been a phase two, from my understanding, for the Maury piece, whether to renovate or build new.
Right.
And there has to be additional work done with that. So in keeping that in mind, some of this money here that's available for identified projects will go to complete that portion as well.
But do we have plans to?
To complete that, absolutely.
The momentum, yeah.
Yes, absolutely. So the first phase of what we did was the educational programming to identify what the twenty-first century learning space would, that is needed in a high school and with the academic and career tech ed focus that Maury has. So now the next steps in that are what's the feasibility of how we get there? Is it a major renovation? Is it a new construction? And so that's the next phase of this work. So that's what's, what we're moving into.
Okay. Ms. Clayton?
I was reading in the list, Crossroads. So the replacement of the, I guess, the green roof and repair the leaks that are there. And Crossroads is how old now?
Just a few years, a few, probably no more than ten.
We have a nice plaque that's sitting in the building that's LEED certified.
Yeah, the, none of our new schools are.
Because of that green roof. So, go ahead, Dr. Boone.
All the green roofs need to go. It'd been utilized for anything. And in listening to Mr. Johnson, the green roof is really a brown roof. And it has developed leaks. And in order, they had to go through a lot of infrared testing to try to determine where those leaks are and what portion has to be replaced. I think, Ms. Camson, when we had a discussion on CIP and you were bringing up about.
I was concerned about the skylight because they had to close the entire art room because of the mold that was coming in there.
But part, part of that, I talked with Danny, there wasn't mold, but it was there.
Thank you for checking on it, though, after I mentioned it too, because I was.
No, it was, it was in progress. It really was in progress and was going to be part of our nineteen budget. So he was looking at that piece, and we have done the infrared testing. Now he's trying to get cost estimate to replace it. And he's trying to get a second estimate on that particular one. It's the first one seemed, he thought it was a little bit high.
So is the art room, that beautiful art room, they have still closed?
Well, we have to find out where the leak. We found out where the leak is because we couldn't just do around the skylight and not fix where the leak was really coming from. It was coming from any place. So now they have identified where the leak is coming from, and they're going to replace that portion.
So then they'll be able to open the art room back up?
Once this gets completed, the skylight will be fixed.
Let me piggyback on that question from Mr. Clayton because I was actually going to mention that. Have we determined why that roof is leaking? Is it because of maintenance? Is it because of manufacturing? I mean, because the concept of a green roof is being used a lot. And so, you know, if we want to embark on another green roof or, you know, a different project, let's say, have we figured out why that one in particular?
Well, that's our only one first. And so we're, that's part of, like I said, they did the infrared checks for, to try to determine where there was some roof compromise. Until they get into actually removing that, we don't know if it was design, installation, maintenance or what it is until we get there. It still shouldn't have been leaking, even if, if whatever's gone on. So until we get in, in there, you know, we now have identified the source of the leaks. But until we get in there and pull that out, we don't know.
So as a district, do we have any recourse, warranty?
We won't know until.
We won't, no, he was checking into, the roof had warranty, but he was also checking into whether we are out of warranty for it, whether it is a malfunctioning of the roof itself. Until they get up, they can determine what it is. And if it is still covered on the warranty because of whatever it is, then they should be covering it based on the warranty.
Exactly how old now? Seven years, something, seven, eight years?
I don't know, I can't recall what year it crossed.
Because it, so it isn't a maintenance problem because you wouldn't have, shouldn't have to maintain a new, a new roof like that.
Well, like I said, so.
We didn't do.
So I, I think it, you know, I think we just need to wait until we, all of the information is available to us. Open in 2010, I'm here.
Okay, a little bit older than I was thinking.
And so, Ms. Ingram, the Lake Taylor Middle School, I think I may have asked this before, so it's not in any of these. It's a separate pot of money as far as the renovations that we're looking at doing in preparation for the opening as well.
Lake Taylor Middle School will have to be done in two phases. The first phase where we are moving Fair Lawn three five into the Lake Taylor Middle School. Those renovation doesn't necessarily meet the threshold of the twenty-five thousand dollars because we don't have to do as extensive repairs or setting up for the pre-K two with the little people and taking care of their needs.
That'll happen the next summer, and that's where we get into capital dollars.
So what we are doing there, we are tracking those and we are using existing operating funds to track what the cost will be to complete phase one of Lake Taylor.
So I just wanted, because I know we've heard about CIP, but there are other maintenance and other things that are occurring throughout the district that aren't necessarily being announced here. And so I don't want people to walk away just thinking that this is the only list of schools that the administration's taking care of, but there are things that are ongoing that would be.
Painting, refreshing, painting, refreshing, filter changes, power washing, all of those things fall under other, more of the routine maintenance pieces. But these are those major projects, again, with a threshold of at least twenty-five thousand. So we, we have a schedule of building painting and refreshing during the summers. And so, again, we continue with our consolidated sites for elementary summer school so that buildings that are designated to have specific work done to it, we, we use that model to allow us to get in there and do the work at those schools.
All right, thank you very much. Very helpful, oh, sorry.
Just, Dr. Boone, if you can remind us what the Facilities Condition Report said. We needed to average in terms of maintenance funds just to maintain our facilities as they currently are?
Somewhere between fourteen and sixteen million annually.
Right, so while we're talking about the three million here and the six million there, as we've talked about earlier, I just don't, I want folks to realize that that's woefully below what we know we need just to maintain what we, what we have. And, and then separately, Jaycocks Elementary School, I can't remember where it was falling in terms of some of the needs there, but if there's, if there's some report or some information you can share with us where Jaycocks falls, both with the parking lot that's next to the church and also with some of the issues that have been brought forward over the last couple of years about bathrooms and items on the inside.
But the bathrooms, definitely.
We have done major work on the bathrooms.
Boy.
Yeah.
They can't seem to get it.
In the last two years, we've done a lot of work on the bathrooms for those improvements, but we, we will provide that information.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item two point oh three, grants.
This is the month where, as we've talked with the board, where we will present information, not for action tonight. The action would be at the June nineteenth meeting. But information tonight as it relates to four of our entitlement grants, titles one through four. And I'll ask Ms. Chavis and whoever else you're bringing up to help support. I'm not leaving you all, just need to step out.
Good afternoon. The presentation this afternoon on the Title One application, we had the presentation and the application was also uploaded. And for docs, that will be done by Ms. Malinak and Dr. Cattaldo, who oversees titles two through four. He will present information on what's included in those applications. So again, Title One, Ms. Malinak, and that's what has been included as a culmination of each school's information of what the principals have looked at their school improvement plans. And that's what's reflected in the Title One plans as well as other work around some other programming. Ms. Malinak?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Gabriel, Vice Chair Clanton, Dr. Boone, who walked out for second, members of the board. I'm here to present, as Ms. Chavis said, the Title One Part A application for next school year starting July one. As you probably know, Title One Part A is the federal fund, federal grant that provides additional funding for schools that are high in a low, high and low income status of students. And those funds are to help the schools upgrade their academic program and help students succeed on SOLs as well as other testing. So for next year, just to give you a really high-level overview, we will have thirty-three Title One schools. That is down one because of the closure of Poplar Halls. That includes twenty-nine elementary schools. Within that twenty-nine includes the K eight buildings as well as the three eight building of Lake Taylor and Fair Lawn merging, three middle schools, and one high school. The high school is Booker T. Yes, Booker T. is the high school. When we look at the funding, we have a thirteen point six million dollar grant. We did take a slight reduction, but fifty-nine percent of the funds do go directly to the schools. And they determine the use of those funds. They tell me whether they want staffing or if they would like funds for professional development, equipment, technology, et cetera. Twenty-three percent of the funds go to support the Title One program, a preschool program that includes twenty-one pre-K three classes, the teachers, the paras, and the other funds to support the classes as well as the staff in early learning Title One that support both the Title One and VPI via coaching for the teachers. The remaining funds go towards Camp Young, the staffing and the programming there, division-level program support, including funds that we use to purchase things like software programs or supplies for all of the Title One schools. We can get a reduced cost with that if we're doing it in bulk. We also have to do family engagement, which is required in Title One. And then we also have funds that we're required to use to support the Migget Evento program, which is our homeless program. Oh, thank you. So when you look at what these schools want to do with the funding, once we work through the division set-asides that I mentioned, we then work with the schools, we give them their allocation, and they tell me what they would like to do with it so that I can work with HR and budget to align their funds. And so you'll see that on staffing, we will have next year plenty of Title One teachers, parent liaisons, full-time paraprofessionals, instructional coaches, data specialists, behavior specialists, Read one eighty teacher. We will also have funds for part-time teachers and paras, funds for professional development, field trips, and supplies, including technology. Again, this is, as Ms. Chavis said, this is based on their school improvement plans and their needs assessments that they do. So it's definitely data-driven in terms of what the faculty, the leadership team, and the principal feel that the school needs to be successful. So having said that, I am open to any questions that you may have regarding the application or use of funds.
All right, Ms. Basine?
So I know with, that there were changes with Title One that allowed for enrichment opportunities and use of those funds for gifted resource teachers. And I know, I think I've asked this every time we have had this conversation, but yet I don't see where, I don't see that in the, in the picture. And I'd like to know.
Sure. Again, we pushed the majority of the funding out, much like you all here on the board believe that the funds need to go to the schoolhouse. I believe the same thing. So we pushed the majority of the funds out to the schools. They then determine, based on their needs assessment, what they need. If they wanted to hire a gifted person for additional enrichment, they could reach out, we could work through that. That would be something that they could do. I certainly do not guide them in where they want to go, that's completely up to them.
I'm curious about that, okay. Thank you. Any other? Camson, and then, did you have your hand up?
I may.
Ms. Camson?
So at this point, and I see with the money, what would be for an elementary school, an average-sized elementary school, a ballpark figure of how much they're now getting? Is it about a hundred thousand?
Oh, that varies. It's driven, it's a per pupil expenditure, so it depends on their, not only on their enrollment, but it would also depend on their poverty level. We serve them in rank order. So the schools that are at a hundred percent low income versus the schools that are at fifty percent would, would have a different PPE. So it's, I couldn't even ballpark it for you.
And I'm familiar with how that thing works, but.
But if you have a range from a two thousand.
Sure, sure. I know that, for example, Jaycocks, they roughly get, I don't want to misquote. I actually have that page tabbed so that I can tell you in case you ask. When we look at Jaycocks, yeah, they have a, their allocation is four hundred and five thousand dollars, a thousand dollars. When you look at a smaller school, we have an elementary school that gets about two hundred and thirty thousand. And even a smaller school, seventy-four thousand. So it depends again on population.
All right, so that's what I was just to address when we're talking about them paying for a full-time teacher, which means a teacher's salary plus benefits. So, you know, a teacher, you figure that you're going to be paying, you know, seventy-five thousand or so for, for a teacher. And so that's when we're asking, when they're asking for another reading. And so that's when we're asking, when they're asking for another reading specialist or gifted, they have to think about what a big chunk that takes out of what they have. And they also have to pay for their own parent liaisons from that budget still. That's not done centrally, so, which you would have thought it would be. Instead, it comes out of that and, and, and they make, that's a chunk of money right there. So it really impacts how much you can put into the schools now that the money has been spread so thinly over so many schools. They used to get a lot of money, and then they could have done stuff like that, but now, and I, I just wanted to clarify that. And that's the reason that they probably are not hiring another gifted person, especially in our really high poverty schools, because they're having, trying to get their children operating at a proficient level. And so that's where the money's going to go as a priority, not that gifted aren't priorities too, but that's, you know, as a principal, you make a decision and, and you want all your children to be proficient. And so that's why you're not seeing a lot of, that a lot of that money goes into part-time people, which are a lot cheaper. You can run a four-day-a-week part-time person with no benefits for, you know, fifteen, twenty thousand. You can get, for a hundred thousand, you can get, get five people working almost all day for four days that are interventionist.
For, with regard to action items for this, are there any specific action items that you're going to need from the board on this?
The business meeting.
The business meeting. Today we are presenting, no action required today, but it will be on the agenda.
Just if you have any questions based on what we'll be voting on at the next business meeting.
Go ahead.
I, I just have a comment also, just, you know, after years of trying to get a better understanding of giftedness. You know, I, I know when we talk about proficiency and then we talk about giftedness comes in all forms. And while a child may not be proficient on an SOL score, based on an SOL score, they may still have characteristics of giftedness. And our low-income populations may, I think there's a lot of assumptions that they're not exhibiting or they're not there, which is why I ask about that, because enrichment opportunities should be provided for every child, whether they're proficient or not proficient. And that coaching in the building is so important so that that's integrated in the classroom. And so I just felt like I, I needed to say that.
I think that's, I think that's an important point to make, because I, I agree with you on that. And, you know, that is going to be where, when we start our budget discussions and we start our priorities again, early on, that we can talk about that. Because what I'm hearing from you is that you all are, are really giving autonomy to the building leaders. And you're saying, use the money how you best see fit, because you are the one that's doing the work every day. And I, I hear that. But I also see the global perspective of, you know, gifted doesn't mean proficient and vice versa.
It doesn't. You could have a higher achieving gifted student.
And here's another one of those areas when we talk about legislative support. That once again, when they talk about a high needs group or, or that type of coming together of creating some flexibility, very little is still spoken about gifted at the state level, and, and we need to push on them for that.
Which is, which is why, as you might, some, those of you that have been on the board had advocated for us including that in our legislative priorities, because we need to be talking about it and be more vocal about it. And I believe just from observation, even at conferences, you know, learning that, you know, principals and teachers, also that professional development piece, I think we really need to make sure that that's there so that they're understanding of what it is, is there, so those opportunities are available for all students.
And I think that work that's been done with William and Mary with us on the gifted plan will also help to drive future decisions around the work of the gifted program. And so that'll be valuable, as we, you mentioned, the budget and future Title One plan.
Perfect. I think also, as, as we look at the budget for next year, we need to think about what should be paid from the general budget. For example, the support with Camp Young is a recent addition to the, to the Title One funding. Before that was totally handled in the general budget. And actually, it's one of the problems that we had when we lost all that money is because we kept trying to get that approved. So that's something to also think about when we do our general budget, where, where we should have been doing something with gifted teachers long ago.
All right.
Okay, cut it off. Thank you.
If there are no other burning questions that you need answered in order to make your decision for June, and if there are, you can email them to Dr. Boone. Let's go ahead and move on to the Title Two, Three and Title Four grants.
Thank you very much. Dr. Gabriel, Dr. Boone, members of the board. So I'll be talking with you tonight about Titles Two, Three and Four. And much like Ms. Malinak giving you an overview, a high-level overview, and again, all of the actual applications are found. I think they've all been posted in the board doc, so you can get some additional details by looking through them. The first grant is the Title Two grant. And Title Two, Part A, is a grant that we kind of refer to it as TPT. It's Teacher Principal Training. So this grant money can be awarded to teachers and principals. It primarily works to increase student academic achievement, really by improving the professional development of teachers and principals as well. So this is not only for Title One schools, this is for all schools within the school division. Funds can be used primarily for that professional development. So if, if a teacher or a principal is talking with me about professional development needs, of course, we have them fill out a needs assessment as well to find out what their needs are. We look at the division as a whole, what the needs are. We can provide that specific school professional development, or we can provide division-level professional development. And our award amount is a little bit over one point seven million dollars. And that was a reduction, I think it was reduced by about four hundred thousand last year or the year before. So there has been a reduction in that. Now, as you can see, some of the areas where we have used this money is for, of course, teacher and principal training, the professional development. We've also been able to utilize reading and math specialists at the school level, content specialists at division level, class-sized reduction teachers as well, also our RTI, or Response to Intervention Teacher Specialists, professional development coordinator and budget technician that works with processing the Title Two, Three and Four grants. Because there's a lot of processing there. Well, I'll go into a little bit of detail with this, but we have private schools also. So private schools also do get Title Two, Three and Four money, and they don't process it. It comes to us, through our department. So we process that, and we have fourteen different private schools that get additional funds. Now, some other things that we do is, we also allocate for teacher and principal mentors. We, much of our stipends that go towards curriculum writing come from Title Two, because it's, again, professional development, working with the teachers. We do cover substitutes for professional development opportunities. Now, we can't always use Title Two money to pay for long-term subs. So we end up using our own money, because we feel the long-term subs should have the same level of support as a first-year teacher or a teacher that's struggling in a certain area. So we provide them additional support as well. Professional development in buildings, conferences, trainings, travel, things like that. And then, as I mentioned before about the private schools, about eight percent of that one point seven million is given to the private schools. And so they divvy that up, and we process all of their paperwork, and we approve. For example, they may put something on there that they want professional development for something that may not be covered under Title Two. And we would deny that and talk with them, coach with them, meet with them a couple of times a year, and then also a lot of the emails back and forth. So that's primarily Title Two. Title Three is geared for our English learners. So they used to be called ESL, English as a Second Language. Now, the official name is now English learners, so we call them Ls. And Title Three money is to provide instruction for limited English proficient and immigrant students. So it basic, the basic aim here is for proficiency to meet state and academic standards. Again, this would apply to any of our L students in all of our schools, and the award amount is just under a million dollars from there. Couple of things that they've done with the Title Three money. Of course, professional development opportunities for generally, general education teachers that again are supporting our L students. We've also looked at supplementary materials, textbooks and things that can work, not the primary book for the student, but supplementary books. We've also looked at summer enrichment programs, newcomers that come in over the summer, get them oriented to the schools and to the division and certain practices that we have. Of course, software purchases that have used to monitor students. There's an extensive monitoring program, and students have to take the Access for Ls test. And that test determines where they are on their proficiency level. So students that come in at one or two, maybe can only say hello or just some very basic words in English. And so what we do is we have to kind of monitor that, and we have to make sure that we're providing those students with a, a certain amount of support. And so that monitoring software does help with that. We also work with part-time teachers for additional direct services for the L students. And then also, we have a required private school set-aside, again, that, which is about eight percent of that total one million. And the, the third grant that I oversee is Title Four, Part A. And this is Student Support and Academic Enrichment Program, SSAE. Now, this grant, we've really, I think this is the third year, I think it's the third year that we're actually doing this grant. It was not a grant that was offered to us before, and it's something that's slowly built, been built up. Originally, we had a, I think we had a total of, I think it was about three hundred thousand, and then it got bumped up to a little bit over one million. So we have heard through different meetings from Virginia Department of Education that they're looking, they potentially may bump that up a little bit more. We haven't gotten those figures yet. This particular grant really focuses on three key areas. It provides funds for programs, activities, and the basic thing is to improve students' academic achievement by increasing the capacity of the local school divisions, like I said, in three different areas. The first area is in well-rounded education. So this traditionally is used for subjects, you know, not math and English, which traditionally get much of the money, but, but also with art and music and these other kind of well-rounded. So things that we can provide students with other opportunities are not just key and basic on math and English. The second area too is that we look at safe and healthy environment. So bullying prevention, things, safe, safe school specialists, people that work in the buildings, working with the schools, being able to provide that level of support to schools. And that's, I think, why you're seeing an increase in that funding, because that's a very key area, that any kind of safety. And again, money goes to the private schools, and they're very interested in increasing the safety within their schools. The third area is in the use of technology. Now, the technology, really, the, it's not so much buying materials of technology, hardware, or really even software, but it's more about building that digital literacy for students, professional development in that area of technology. Now, it's, and then our award is, like I said, a little bit over a million, and we're looking to see potentially that going up. Now, some things we have done with this particular title grant is we have a teacher for an overage student elementary class. So it's a class where there are students that are overage by, I think, at least two years. And they are worked specifically with this teacher, and we have a par educator there to get some real specific intervention to catch them up and get them so they can continue on and go into middle school and not be way ahead of students. Because we know that students that are a couple of years ahead, sometimes they're not as engaged, that school is not as important to them. So we wanted to provide that opportunity.
Is that the Bridge program?
It's actually, Students Determined to Succeed. You received an invitation for an awards ceremony, I think, tomorrow.
Right. So that is that one, is that Bridge program?
There are actually two teachers there, and one is funded through Title Four, and the other is locally funded and a para for each of those classrooms.
Exciting.
Thought of those a couple of years ago.
Last year.
Because we had them in the past and they went away, so I was excited to see that that's been returned as a great program.
We were able to advance some students mid-year into the middle school component of Lake Taylor Middle.
How exciting.
Great. Another part is advanced placement. So we do not charge students for taking the advanced placement test. The test itself is a little over a hundred dollars, and if you look regionally, many school divisions charge a full amount to students. We do not, and some of that money comes from Title Four, so we put that money in for the students.
And it's important for us to maintain that, given the number of students eligible for free and reduced-priced lunch. We don't want the test to be a barrier to them accessing the potential college utilization of those schools.
Because many of them would not take that test, would not really be involved in classes. Transition specialists, safe school specialists, as I mentioned before, the safe schools. And then, of course, we have that required private school set-aside, which is approximately eight percent of that total.
You described, under the Title Four grant, you decide, described what safe meant. What about healthy? What do you mean by, what does?
Well, would it be an example of the healthy part? Would be information, like in health, health and PE. For, for example, we can use Title Four for health and PE, as well as providing additional support for materials, materials and things that help students become healthier.
But not, would it at all be applied to nutrition or anything in the cafeteria?
I'm not sure. I know we use it for some of our suicide prevention work too. Child nutrition is what they call an enterprise account, so a lot of times when we do nutrition education through that, they can fund it.
Healthy can be interpreted a lot of different ways.
Yeah, it can be. It can be. What's, what's interesting too is we just went to the training about two weeks ago, BDOE, Virginia Department of Education. And what's interesting is when people, when other school divisions, because all the divisions were there, they're coming up with ideas and things for their particular application. And a few times, they said, no, that's definitely not allowable. But then if you use some different language, it actually is allowable. And, and so that's the interesting part, is that you really have to look at that piece and work with Virginia Department of Education as you start developing it, and then work within your own schools, and even regionally too, that helps out.
Okay. All right. Ms. Basine, Ms. Kamson, Mr. Flynn.
So thanks for that overview. I have two questions. One is related to Title Three. So with the, and I don't know if this is accurate, but one of the things on school visits that I've been hearing is that the English language learner population is, seems to be changing, and not that their, that English is their second language, but that they also haven't been in instructional, or in a school setting at all. So are there specific supports for that, that, that we are addressing now, or is that, does that not play into?
We've actually increased our professional development in that area, specifically to make teachers more aware of that. Because the students that we're seeing, as you said before, they, they haven't really been matriculated in their schools, but then they've come to this country. They have not been in education, in any formal education in many, many years. And so what we've been doing is increasing our professional development. So I know a lot of our funds have been going directly towards that, really working with that support system, because we've noticed that difference and that change as well.
We have scenarios where there may be a pre-teenager, but maybe reading or operating at a first or second grade level. Well, they're not housed, obviously, at an elementary school, but they're serviced in.
High school right now is usually Norview, Norview High School, and that's where we put some students. Yes.
It's not unusual to find a number of students new to this country that have had significant interruptions in their education or limited education.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah. And so, and my second question is, when you say the private schools, do you mean our private day programs? Are you talking about private schools?
Private schools.
Okay. All right.
We have, I think, fourteen in this area.
Fourteen in this area. Okay.
Kamson?
On, with the Title Four, where you have the safe, safety specialist, is that a single position that oversees something? Or are, or are there safety specialists going into schools? I mean, how is that position being used?
The safe school specialist.
Safe school specialist. She's one for bullying. She's actually been part of the policy committee revising dress code, suspensions, all that. She's a part of that.
Does she oversee the PBIS program?
She doesn't, but part of, we've talked about with Title Four funds, we're able to, we've got a plan for more, more implementation, a greater level of implementation professional development beginning next year, such that every school, we're going to just start from the beginning and retraining each of our schools around PBIS.
And so at the moment, we, we never refilled, we never refilled, we never filled the, when the position went vacant for the PBIS coordinator. That was not, that, that, it just kind of. That was not, that, did it just kind of go away?
We restructured that position to do support with, why am I drawing a blank? Interagency collab, I'm looking at Dr. Burison, interagency collaboration and wraparound services.
So, that's, again, I remember, I do remember reading about that.
Right, right. And so, we restructured that program, that position for that. And as Ms. Chaves is saying, we're going to redo where we are with PBIS.
Yeah, because we kind of, without anyone guiding that, it kind of, it's gone away in a lot of our schools.
Well, a lot of schools are still using it with fidelity, but we'd never had a hundred percent of the schools implementing with fidelity. So, that was our challenge.
And so, that'll, will that be something that will be Title IV? Is that something you're trying to...
We will include the safe school specialist for that work. And yes, the funding for that will come from Title IV.
Okay, thank you.
Clinton?
Yeah, so, I think Ms. Bassin may have asked a lot about, because when I was thinking about the Title III fund and with the new L's, these down there, I was thinking about, because I've had some individuals who approached about, you know, bilingual, being able to produce materials, brochures, and things like that in other languages. And I was just trying to, do we pull anything out of that pot of money, or where does that come from, if we were to...
You mean, yes, we do. We have Language Line that we use, but we also do use that money for translation services and provide information in other languages.
Right. And my second question was in regard to ESSA and some of the requirements that are there. And just to ask you all, it's, you know, the presentation and the application that we're making in each of those, are we, I mean, are we completely in compliance of what they're requesting us, or are we seeing any particular challenges that might be in the way that, you know, that the board may need to address the support?
Nope. They will let us know if it's not, if it's not approved.
If it's not approved, they send it back.
We have a lot of conversations with them about what's appropriate, what you can use funds for, what you can't. And with ESSA, it's actually been a little more relaxed in some of the areas. There's more availability. But, yeah, it's a lot of conversations, a lot of training, and really getting that guidance from the state.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I remember a time not too long ago that we were concerned about whether or not we were going to be getting Title funds at all. And we had to put some notifications out for individuals with regards to their employment because of the way that, is it the Secretary of Education that would, you know, oversee that? So, if there are concerns about budget forecast as we go into this next budget cycle, our continued advocacy, since this is at a federal level, whatever we need to do in order to maintain or better validate why we are using these funds and how they are being used to support student achievement, I'll just put that out there.
Yeah, absolutely. We stay fully engaged with that at the federal level. And Congress has not started its budget work with FY20 budget, which begins October 1. So, until somebody starts talking about it, we, you know, we're trying to fly on the radar screen with it right now. But the federal budget is October 1, September 30.
Okay. Thank you very much.
The next portion of our meeting is for policy discussion, and I know that we have several policies that are before us. Dr. Boone, you have...
Well, you're the policy committee, and we support it.
Okay, perfect. So, Ms. Bassin, Ms. Martin, all ready to lead us in this discussion?
Okay, so, as you said, we have several policies here, but I'm going to draw your attention to ones that, you know, we should really focus our attention on. A majority of them, just to be quick, are, you know, changes to state code and references, as we typically get these updates from VSB. However, we have a few new policies. We have a leave without pay, which is separate from our sick leave, and we have the alternatives to animal dissection, and policy GAAZ, which is the staff time schedules. Those are some new policies that have come from VSB. Are there any questions about any of those policies? Or any more information needed?
I don't have any questions. I had one about some of the current policies.
Yes. When you say current policies, you mean related to those?
Not the new ones suggested by the VSB.
Oh, okay. All right. And then, the other, the other two in the interest of time that I, and Ms. Martin, chime in if there's other things that I'm missing, but that we really want to point your attention to is policy JFCZ, which is a new policy. It's a bullying prevention and awareness policy, as well as the dress code policy.
And first, I'd like to start with the bullying policy, which, just to give some background, this is a carryover work from the previous board. We had begun discussions around this, largely to respond to, you know, some concerns from parents, as well as concerns specific around, you know, whether there is or isn't an increase in bullying, but where do I find information? How do we address it? How do we, how are we defining it, especially in the age of cyber, you know, cyber bullying? So...
Excuse me, ma'am, can I just ask one question for clarification?
Yeah.
So, we were talking about the group of policies. There are policies in here that we need to have in place by the end of this year? Is that correct?
That is correct.
And then, there are other policies that we may be trying to get in place for our own internal needs, but don't have legal requirements for us to have in place. Can you just point out the ones that require us to make sure we approve before this month is out, so we're compliant with the state?
Well, we are required, and the student suspensions and expulsions policy, for instance, that one, we are required to approve before the end of the school year. And that is, I believe, and Mr. Cloud, correct me if I'm wrong, is that, is that correct, the only one by the end of the school year?
Yes, we should. It reflects changes to some...
Right. Right. And the other policies are not, and the anti-bullying and the dress code are specific to initiated by the, by the board or the administration. So, those are not, they do not...
Have legal...
Yeah, have legal consequences or a legal, a legal deadline to be done by June 30. However, if they're, to get it into the code of conduct, you know, for our practices, before this...
Time-sensitive.
Yeah, they're time-sensitive in the sense that if we want to do it, but we also have to be cogni, you know, cognizant of having a deep discussion around some of these policies, so that we have time to really address any concerns we might have and concerns of the community, so...
I'd like to add that we've spent several months discussing these at length. So, there has already been a very comprehensive, many comprehensive discussions around these. So, I just wanted to let you know that there had, you know, this has been vetted over and over again. Not to say that there isn't any more input, but just, we have spent a lot of time on it.
And I just wanted to make sure for the business meeting, then, that we know that for the student suspensions and expulsions, if there's any questions or concerns, we need to make sure that we're comfortable with that.
Right.
Now, and at least by...
Right, yes, thank you for that.
...two weeks from now. Because we need to make sure we're in compliance with that.
Right. And these were both posted for public comment, correct? Like, was it the bullying one?
The student expulsions?
I know the... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm talking about bullying and dress code.
No, so, based on today's conversation, the plan is to have it posted for public comment, as we have done previously, so that, you know, our parents and students and teachers can review it and provide us feedback. And I believe some teacher groups have already vetted and looked at it and provided some feedback as well, so...
In principle.
So, it's been partially, partially reviewed. Right, in principles, yeah.
Okay.
It'd be, I think when we get a big stack like this, then it would be helpful, like Mr. Jordan said, to know which ones have to be done immediately, which ones you feel are ready to go into the consent agenda, and which ones are in need of review. If we kind of could sort them...
It was like a little chart, you know?
That would be great. Yeah, that would be great, so they're sorted. Because I wasn't even thinking about one, and Mr. Jordan was thinking about, but if we have a deadline on that one, we have to make a decision today, or I guess, right before, right, right, but next, next, before the business meeting. So, that would be helpful. Perhaps that's something we could have, I don't know, Ms. Martin?
It could go, you know, when they, when they put it up on board docs, they put a cover sheet on it, which lists the policies. So, it might be helpful to just have maybe that chart with, with that. And then, that would say...
You just mark where they are.
You know, to say, "Legal changes need to vote on..."
That would be good, so we know.
"Board needs further board discussion." And then, if there's a timeline that needs to be done for public comment, then we put that on there as well.
And that way, maybe...
No, I've, I've read, I've read a lot of them, not very first off.
I tried to skim through them all myself, too. So, maybe they could be grouped, so you could start off by saying, "These are the ones that need to be approved this month. These are the ones that are also ready, but, you know, want, make sure you file." And then, "These are the ones that we're still doing public comment on."
And I believe, and Dr. Burison, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe when it goes to the district leadership team for vetting, too, that, that a similar type of table is provided, right?
Oh, that'd be great.
So, we might be able to modify it for our needs.
So, do you all need feedback on, on what, so, you accept feedback on all of them, but are there any ones that you're going to lead us in discussion with, with regards to what you need for next steps to go back to the policy committee?
Yes.
Okay.
So, as Mr. Jordan said, first, you know, the one we're required to have by the end of the month is the student suspensions and expulsions. And it has been brought to the board in a work session a couple of times this year already. And so, first, you know, I just want to be clear that no one has any other concerns or questions, because if not, then it will be on the consent agenda along with the others, the others that we are not going to talk to, talk about in greater detail. Otherwise, the greater discussion is required really around the bullying prevention, as well as the dress code policy. So, those are two big ones that we need to have a deeper discussion around, which is what I was starting to get into with the anti-bullying, as to what, what's the need around that. And, you know, years ago, when we had the strategic planning, and we said we're going to be the cornerstone of a proudly diverse community, part of it proudly diverse and inclusive. And so, when we, you know, a year and a half ago or so, when we started to think about it, we also want to think about all of our student populations, including our students who are LGBTQ, and making sure that we have safe environments for every child. And so, part of the motivation around this is to, to also clearly spell out what that, what that might be, and being very clear about instances of bullying for all children. And so, that's kind of the crux of this policy.
Are there any board members that have comments on the bullying policy?
I have a question. So, in terms of human or financial resources to implement the policies, are there any, any issues, any considerations as far as staffing or funding that we need to consider as part of the adoption of the policy?
I don't believe so. And Dr. Boone, you can correct me if I'm wrong, as we talked about with the title, the grant, the grants, we have a safe school specialist who has been working very closely with us over the last several months to develop this policy. And I believe will also be carrying out the work around the enforcement, the training, all of that. So, the implementation, you know, that will be, you know, Dr. Lance's department and really carrying out the training piece of it. And then, there's the enforcement and the reporting, which will then be on the, on the schools. But we do have the safe school specialist, too, already in place to oversee that work.
A comment. I think this is a great policy. I particularly like the section in here that speaks to the education and the awareness piece of it, because that's going to be key in terms of parents, students, especially those two groups, as well as teachers. But I've seen too many times where students, one, are afraid, I think awareness is going to help with that, parents just don't know what to do. So, the implementation part of this is really going to be key to the success of this program and awareness, so.
And to that point, that's part of the reason when we had the opportunity to bring on a safe school specialist, we targeted the support around bullying as part of that when we submitted that request to VDOE.
One thing I would, so, aside, outside of the committee, but one thing I would, I'm asking you all to consider is, so, in the policy, well, first, let me step back. So, Norfolk has done really great work in terms of our policy development to be inclusive of all groups. We, I think, in, in the Commonwealth have been ahead, you know, with our non-discrimination policy, where we explicitly, you know, have spelled out our inclusivity of all, you know, sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression. And so, that piece of it, I would like to see us enumerate that in this policy, because research shows that by stating that you are, you know, just by having the words in there makes a big difference for students, so that they see themselves in the policy, and that victimization around it. So, one thing I would like in our purpose is to include and enumerate, you know, that, the subgroups that we might be talking about. Like we do in a lot of our policies, that, you know, based on, you know, race, gender, I don't, it's in our dress code policy. So, we have it in there, we've enumerated it in there, but we haven't enumerated it in the bullying policy.
I would support that.
So...
I'll support that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
So, that would be one change, you know, that would be the only...
So, this would go out for first and second readings, and then it would be put on the docket for, I don't know, tell me when you would want to put it on the docket for approval?
And Dr. Lance, for July, for the business meeting in July, because we want to give ample time for families and students to be able to really vet the policy and give us feedback.
So, Ms. Jackson, can you just make a note to have that on for, as a, as an item for voting on in the July business meeting? Perfect. Dress code?
So, dress code, so, dress code policy hadn't been updated. The last update was in 2002. And in talking with the administration, we felt...
Student dress code only.
The student dress code, yeah. We're talking about the student dress code.
Not the teachers.
Right. Yeah, that, that will, we may have to address at a different point. But, but right now, we're talking about the student dress code. Let me see, if you all have that in front of you, it's policy JZZBZ. Again, it did not come as a recommendation from VSB, so it is a Norfolk-specific policy in which we want, wanted to create a more gender-neutral and tolerant policy. And as you can see, we did have lots of discussion about this and feel that we've, we reviewed and researched policies across the country to, you know, really think about sexism that exists in our policies, racism that exists in policies, not in ours, but, you know, that tend to be exhibited in dress code policies, and try to really be as inclusive, yet, keeping in mind, it's safe, a safe and conducive learning environment.
I thought it was interesting reading the cannot-wear ones, what it's like.
Well, yeah, there's some edits that still need to be made in here. Number one, being there, we did look at a must-wear, may-wear, cannot-wear. We actually pulled the may-wear out, and that needs to be taken under, out under basic principle, number one. Another thing was on the cannot-wear. You know, a lot of our students have tattoos in high school now. So, so you can't wear anything on your person that is violent, violent images, or profanity, or pornography.
So, so you, you can't wear anything on your person that is violent, violent images, or profanity, or pornography. So, you know, we're talking about covering that up. And another thing that we did discuss quite a bit about was safety, safety of what you, you know, what you wear, and, and, you know, the appropriateness of it. So, so there's, there's still a couple edits, hats, we talked about not allowing hats, and it's not listed in here.
And so the tattoo one's not listed either, because I don't remember reading that one. Okay, I thought, I missed it when I read it.
Um, so we were going to say on your person, and not just on your clothing.
So they would need to put a bandage or something over it, like teachers, teachers are supposed to do that.
I don't recor- I don't recall that, but we can talk about it here and see if.
So they can have a tattoo, as long, but if it has any of this cannot-wear things, that needs to be covered, but a regular tattoo is okay. All right, thank you. That's a good clarification.
Ms. Smith, I saw your hand up.
No, Ms. Martin addressed that I noticed the may-wear, cannot-wear.
Yeah, we took the may-wear out, you can see it's not even on here, it's just the wording is still in there under basic principle. But anything, we also double-checked our must-wears and our cannot-wears, and everything really goes back to our principle here. If you, if you have a question about, about it, if you go back to the principle, the basic principle, and why we've selected these items, why we've come up with this framework, that should be able to cover it.
Now, I'm going to just use this as an example, because I don't see it in here. So it'll be okay to wear hats or headgear inside the building.
No.
So where's that addressed?
That's what I'm saying, the hats was.
It wasn't on here.
It was supposed to be added on the cannot-wear.
But can we not say?
Religious reasons.
Can we not restrict it to hats? And I don't know how you would say hea- headgear.
We essentially do, in our discussion, we said you could wear hoodies, but you can't wear the hood. So essentially, you shouldn't have anything over your hat.
Not over your hat.
Well, there are other headgears that are worn in public these days in schools that probably should not be worn.
Like what, do you know?
Can you give an example?
You're not talking about devices?
No.
Oh, okay. I mean, like, I'm, because there are, there are hats that have, like.
Well, you know, people wear pajamas outside.
Oh, pajamas are not allowed.
Like a bonnet.
Okay.
Yeah, like a bonnet. Oh, a bonnet's not a hat. A bonnet is typically for sleepwear.
Right.
But, but, but.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
We were just having that conversation with, with someone.
What kind of bonnet would that be?
It looks like a shower cap, but it's satin, designed to protect hairstyles.
Let me ask you all this, what feedback have you gotten from administration and from principals about this policy so far?
Dr. Lance, yeah, because they've been speaking with them about that.
Good evening. We continue to receive feedback, and as was mentioned earlier about the public comment period, I would imagine we will get even more. But some of the comments that you've mentioned already, we have received some feedback about that, particularly to make sure that there's clarification. I know during the policy review committee discussions, we talked about the fact that there would be training with principals and other staff to make sure that there's some clarity. So as I've received some of the feedback, I've thought back to some of our recent meetings about conversations, because we have had some discussions about, as you've just heard, the may-wear, must-wear, may-not-wear, and being too specific and not specific enough. So part of the feedback from the principals has involved that. The questions and concerns about specific things related to hats and hoodies, so being more specific. I saw a piece of feedback today that one principal wanted very specific feedback, and referenced back to some of our policy review discussions, jeggings and all of those types of things. So there was some very specific articles of clothing that were referenced. There, so I've gotten quite a bit of feedback from principals and continue to receive that. I also received feedback, like in terms of what Mrs. Bassin mentioned, and the appreciation of making sure that we're being inclusive and not being sexist. And so there were comments about appreciating that as well. But I have received quite a bit of feedback, and imagine that I will receive even more. There were a couple of other comments specifically about where it notes, you know, how it generally says shoes. I got some feedback about, can we be more specific about what types of shoes? Some of you who have been part of the policy review committee discussions are aware that we've had the athletic shoe versus slides versus flip-flop conversation. A part of that, a piece of the feedback that I received directly was, you know, how much time do we want principals spending on monitoring and discussing shoe type? Also got feedback about the fact that if people, and people immediately say, I've had multiple people say to me, flip-flops are dangerous, athletic slides are dangerous, and I've had a couple of principals share with me, they have not had any accidents related to athletic slides, and even pointed out that in some cases they're aware of, those are the shoes that the student has at this point, that that might be the only pair of shoes. And so the main, just around that portion of the conversation, was just us being mindful about how much time we expect with this policy and, and others, particularly related to the enforcement of, you know, jeggings and ripped jeans and those types of things.
Right, and see, I really appreciate that, because the tuck rule, the tuck rule took so much time. No one tucks in their shirts anymore, and that was just a battle, and I think it's the same way we're headed with the flip-flops. You know, that's what people are wearing now.
They're still shoes.
Yeah, yeah.
You can't walk in without shoes.
But they were banned, flip-flops were banned.
Yeah, there was a safety, that, that was a risk management thing at that time.
But when I read this, all I could think of is, the tuck rule is gone.
Yeah.
Yay.
Along those same lines, I did get some feedback about, like, the width of straps. And a couple people referenced the flamingo test with the length of skirts and shorts and those types of things. So we did get some very specific feedback, more than one, back to the, the general feedback versus the very specific concerns, and that some of the principals did express that they would like more specific language, because they do find that in talking with students at their schools, or families that had students at multiple schools, well, you can wear spaghetti straps here, you can't wear them there, you can wear, you know, these types of straps, even shoulders. That was part of the feedback that I received as well.
And we went back and forth on this. I mean, we tried not to be specific, because we didn't want to offend anybody, but we needed to also have some, some boundary there. And with the spaghetti straps, that would also fall under no undergarments showing, so that if you wore spaghetti straps, you also should wear the appropriate undergarment. You know, it's just.
Well, I think that's the bottom line, is that, you know, they want specific languages, do you see undergarments? If you see undergarments, then, you know, it's not whether the, the whole inch, you know, three inches, four inches. I mean, that's silly, in my opinion, no offense.
And if we have a guy wearing spaghetti straps with his hairy armpits hanging out, you know, like in the lunchroom, is that sanitary? I mean, I'm just saying, this is, this is the level of conversation that we have been over and over. And so, you know, I can under, I can appreciate wanting some specificity, but when we're talking about thousands of people and trying to be as inclusive and not gender biased as possible, it's extremely difficult to provide that level of.
It, it is, but that becomes the daily dilemma of a principal. Without the specificity, one school allows something, the other school doesn't allow something. And again, the challenge in polis- policies like this is defining every opportunity. And so families have kids in two different schools, where my child was able to do this at their school, and then not the other, and then that comes to the superintendent, to administration, to the board. And so that becomes that time constraint piece, and so that's that balancing act. You know, I, I get the idea of not trying to define everything, but not defining it at all leaves it so subjective that the principals get pinched in it.
And I think that's, well, right, you just said it, I was going to say the training and the professional development around, around it is going to be important.
And exactly what Dr. Boone mentioned, the, the, them having to address that. I know one principal referenced the ambiguous language, that, you know, whether it's skin tight, we did have conversations about how tight things can be, and what things look like on different body types, and all of that. So, but.
An opaque.
That's in one of, that's one of the pieces of feedback.
The question has to be why then, you know, because if someone has a problem with, this is me, my, if someone has a problem with the tightness of something that is sexist, I mean, it is. And so it's, in my opinion.
Could I say something to that, because the, the problem in the schoolhouse is, so the board doesn't want to commit to those kind of variations, to hard definitions. So that leaves the school principal having to make that decision every day. And so what you're basically doing is you're dropping that on the school principal, who needs to have time to be being a school principal, and this, and, and who gets the direct fire from parents who don't agree with the, with that particular principal's interpretation of it. And, and that's what you're doing, you're asking every single principal in the district to inter, when, when you're making, I mean, I understand why you want to do it general, but if you're in the classroom in that situation, even the classroom teacher, they get by the principal, the classroom teacher's interpreting it different. And so there's no way you're ever going to unify that, and that's why your principals are saying it's too ambiguous, because then I'm on the line making that decision, and, and because, and the school board should have made that decision. The school board should be making the decision, not me as the principal. Tell me exactly what I'm enforcing, and I'll enforce it, but don't make me determine between child and child.
One other piece that they mentioned was the, anything related to the policy, however it can be interpreted, the, the safety concerns that might be associated with anything. And we realize that the, that the, making sure that the hat piece is clear, and in the training that we ensure that people are very clear about if you have a hooded shirt on, that you don't have the hood on, because they, you know, reference the, the wearing headphones and earpieces and all of that. So we did talk about that, but just overall safety, as well as the ambiguous nature of some of it.
Okay, so, okay, Ms. Smith, real quick, and then we're going to wrap this part up.
I was going to say, we can be a little bit more specific on some of these. And when it comes to, like, tightness of clothing, I don't necessarily see it as sexist, because men also, or males also often put on clothing that is tight, tops. Hey, there was a minister that used to, there, there was a minister that used to be on TV with, with tight clothes on. And the bottom line of it all is distracting, it's not so much whether it's a male or female, it's distracting in the educational environment is more of the issue. So I think it would be, if we were descriptive in it, it's the equitableness of how it's applied, more so than anything else.
We'll have to define what tight means.
And that, that is the consistency piece, and what is the minimum. You know, I think we could probably all agree on what the minimum is, which is what our policy committee had talked about. You know, shirt, dress, you know, it, it's listed there, and the must-wear, that's the minimum. And then the can't is what we're talking about, when we start talking about inches and tightness and all of that, that starts to become very subjective for a principal. So I think in the PD around it, we're going to have to really be clear.
So let's, let's, let's frame this conversation. I want to say thank you to the members of the policy committee for bringing this up, because we have received letters from students to address this issue. We've received feedback from staff members to address this issue. This is us addressing the issue in, in, in this fashion. I'll make a comment, and then I'm going to get to what our next steps are going to be. Our comment, as I've heard many times in several situations within Norfolk Public Schools, as soon as our kids walk in the door, even at pre-K, we are thinking about what are the next steps for these children? Career, college, service, everything. And so when we put this policy in place, I, I can, I, I want to be very respectful of what kids want to wear at school, but when they're in school, this is their job. And we need to make sure that they are coming here so that they can be focused on their education, they're not distracted, and that we do have some expectations. And if there are situations where the child might only have one pair of shoes, or a certain amount of dress clothes, we need to work with them. But going on to the next steps, what we need to hear from, from you all is, what is the timeline? When are you going to put the feedback out for the principal, or for, for, you know, NPS, within NPS? When are you going to put the information out for a public comment, and then when do you need us to take action?
That has already been discussed as we've had the different meetings. And so currently, or as of today, after this meeting, the guidance that we received was that we would have the information posted. There's a June 12th date that we discussed. And then the main thing about the July board meeting, the, if we actually have approval by then, so given the period of public comment time, then the approval in July would be the last date. If we were trying to have any specific information in the student handbook for printing, that would be the last point in the month, or in, in order to get that into that particular document, before that is prepared and printed and distributed in late August, early September.
And, and I would recommend, you know, to make that edit in the number one basic principle, to take out the may-wear before we post it, so that it's not convincing.
Or cannot-wear, that's what it was.
Yeah, and cannot-wear.
I just, I just looked at my notes, what, what happened to the homework policy? It went out to the principals?
Yeah, they, there was some more discussion. Ms. Chavis had sent an email about that.
Did you get my request in, because I know last time it came back to us, it wasn't in there about the schools coming up with plans for children who don't have anywhere to go.
Right, we have addressed the comments that have been brought up by board members, and the feedback received so far from the community, but I believe principals are also reviewing it and have other, additional feedback, so.
Thank you.
Great, we will, we have a policy committee meeting on June 17th, and we're going to continue discussion on that.
Madam Chair, a couple of things for the committee and for the board to consider before we post, and these are mostly technical. But in the purpose, I know we start with the mission of Norfolk Public Schools. I would recommend we remove that. Missions can change, and you don't want to be in a position where you just have to update a policy every time the mission changes. Also, in the, in the current policy, I think the language is more positive and affirming in how it describes it, that almost what Dr. Gabriel was saying, that the dress is about creating a positive environment versus, I think, the language that we have now sounds more negative. So I would just ask, we might want to consider that. And then the very last thing, just a technical thing on this policy and all the other policies, where we're showing at the bottom of the policies that is adopted on June 5th, that shouldn't be there. We shouldn't have a date on the adoption until. Yes.
Yeah, yeah, because it's not technically adopted yet.
So before we, before we post it, let's make, edit with the must-wear and change the, take out that date.
Yeah, hats and tattoos.
So a draft will come back to us for, after you've included these comments before you post, or what's the, or you just?
We can, if that's, if that's the will of the board to, to do that, we can do that.
I'm just trying to make sure that whatever has been referenced today around tattoos and hats and everything else, that.
I'm comfortable with them, making, making sure that those changes got done, and then they can put it out. I don't, I don't have to see it again.
We'll just offer our comments on the forum.
Okay, all right.
I was just going to say, the, the tattoo piece, we'll make sure that we have that clear. I'm aware of the hat piece, but I, I'll need to make sure that I get with you about the note about the tattoos, or just how we want to word that, but I can do that outside.
We had talked about wording it as on your person.
I have one general comment, and I don't know if it falls here or not, but it's been several issues around the country with hairstyles, is that something that falls within this policy? Or is that a separate policy? Or is that a separate policy?
Well, if it's not, we aim to be culturally sensitive with this, which is, we did not talk about hairstyles, because then we start getting into.
We did talk about it.
I mean, we talked about it, but it's not, it's not addressed in this policy. And I don't believe we have any other policy specific to, to hair, hairstyles.
Well, I'm not asking for it.
Yeah, I was like, I don't think we wanna open up that.
Cut off either.
No. I mean, our, our aim is to, you know, be as inclusive and culturally sensitive and as possible.
Again, that's why, with the purpose of, this is the environment that, you know, our vision, so if it's not obstructing anyone's view, or, you know, we can't work around it.
Right.
Okay. That's the one issue.
All right. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Since we're still on the policy piece, at our, I think it was our last work session, when we talked about the advisory committee piece there, and we came forth, and I know that, Ms. Basine, you had made a recommendation on adding a component in there. I just want to make sure that we get together so that we can make sure that those things are added.
Adding a component to, to which?
I'm skipping the top of my head, but I just remember that we had a general discussion about combining to make sure, I can't remember if anybody else remembered.
Well, what I, what I recall is that when we discussed the advisory committee policies, we had suggested some edits. And then we had done this with the entire board. And so the.
But, so are you putting it back to the policy committee? Did you make those edits?
No.
Well, I think we had mentioned that, I, I was trying to figure out when we were in the room who actually would be in charge of making those edits, because I'd like for them, because the whole timeline was to have it in time for our meeting, our business meeting, so that we could place those on the consent agenda.
Right. Right.
Oh, I thought they were for the retreat.
I thought, I thought so, too.
No, no, the, we were gonna be making those, we were gonna be adopting those policy changes at the June meeting.
Okay. But I, I guess I didn't realize that the policy committee was.
No, they were very small changes. There were a few red line changes. So this is what we should do then. Make sure that everybody has reviewed the changes. Can you send that email out then? To the policies that we discussed at our last, I can't remember if it was the work session or the business meeting, where we discussed that, the advisory committees. I think your question was, we're looking at a section of the policy versus the whole policy. But it was just the section that we were proposing the changes, we weren't proposing changes to anything else.
Yeah.
And so what I need to make sure of is that everybody has read and that they understand the proposed changes that are there, because it will be an item on the, on the docket. It can either be consent, or we can do it separately. But I'm looking to get it on the, for a vote on the June formal meeting.
Okay, so, okay.
So I'll send an email back out with those as electronic, and then just follow up so that we can make sure that everyone has ample time, and then we can place it on the agenda.
Perfect. You know, two other, one other item on that topic. We've received an application for a vacancy for the SHAC committee from Ms. Davis, and then we also have one from another individual from the CAC. I'd like to put those applications out for the board to review. You've, you've already had one of them, but I'd like to put the other one out for your review, and to also put those applications, unless you have questions, up for vote on the business meeting as well.
Okay. So the only thing about the SHAC, as we currently have it in our policy, is that it's a superintendent appointment. So if we are changing that process, then that policy would have to be changed first.
So, I think that was one of those when we talked about kind of streamlining. And Mr. Jordan did bring up that there were some that were state regulated. And so, but I think that this was one of those that was not, and we were talking about, we should just kind of streamline across the board. So that'll be a part of that email that goes back out, because I think that's one of those that addresses that.
It was, right.
So, I, I'm sorry.
But, but even if we follow the, the overarching policy, I think we can still put forth a recommendation for a vacancy.
Well, so, this is, this is where I think we were getting in before, that is, we have two paths going. So there's the opportunity to make appointments that we can do right now under the current policy. There was the discussion around trying to make sure that we were advertising and sharing with the community what our, what our opportunities are. And we're trying to make an appointment of something that we haven't advertised at the same time that we're changing the policy to try to make the appointment. And that's why I thought we'd agree that we were going to take some time and do an assessment of what our current membership was, what the vacancies were, and that we were gonna discuss that at a retreat. And I thought we had said that in August, or June, or July sometime was when we said we were gonna then try to make any outstanding appointments under any new policy. Because even if we don't know whether or not, at least under the current policy, where we say we try to achieve, you know, geographic diversity and so forth, it would just seem to me, we need to do an evaluation of where we are. And I don't think there's any sense of urgency outside of, I know with CAC and GEAC sometimes, they have to do some things based upon their existing bylaws. But I would be opposed to just make an appointment for the sake of an appointment, and when we may then come back that same night and make some, make some changes.
Well, the way, the way that I was thinking about it was, it's almost like we're doing two things simultaneously. We're trying to revise our processes so that they're more streamlined, and we're trying to also discuss how we can advertise to make sure that there's good representation and all that. But at the same time, we have work that's being done on all of the committees. And I know specifically, the email that I received from the chair from the CAC was that this one was pretty important to get filled because of a vacancy that's there. And so with the, with the SHAC committee, we do have vacancies. And the way that I put it to Ms. Davis, and the way that I also put it to Ms. Washington, was I, I don't have a problem if they apply, and the board can consider approving it, but when we go through our process, which we're going through now, about filling the slots for terms that are, many of them are set to expire, those individuals would have to reapply for those, for those spots. So it's, it's really to allow them to serve in a vacancy setting, and then once the board has come to an agreement on how we're going to, you know, put forth the applications and whatnot, which you've discussed a little bit already, then if they need to reapply, then they reapply.
Right, but the board could just as easily just grant them continuation extension until August, and we do it all at once. I don't, I just think that if our goal is to be open and inclusive, then we should be open and inclusive. I don't think we should pick and choose, you know, individuals and then rearrange our policies in order to make an appointment to an individual. I just don't think that's appropriate.
That's my opinion. No, and, and you're definitely entitled to your opinion there, but I don't, I don't agree with the, the last comment, changing the policy just to kind of fit for a single appointment. I think that there's some general consensus around there that we could streamline it, and we could, and as the board, we can determine how we're gonna do those appointments. I have no problem, even for myself, looking at, because I asked for information and we've gotten it, to take a deep dive in July during the board retreat, to really look at making sure that we had diversity and equity across the district and the entire city for representation, because it is true, when we look at some of here, we have a lot of duplication, same number of people in certain areas represented and others. And so if we're truly staying in the spirit of transparency and trying to be open, then, you know, we, we want to have that. But I also think that there's a lot of work that occurs over the summer. I mean, a lot of critical things happen, a lot of planning. And if we have openings that are there and we have individuals who have come forth, it's not saying that we're opening up the entire floodgate. I think that we have an opportunity to be able to make those appointments, and to be able to go in and simultaneously come back and still spend the necessary time in July to look at how do we completely fill this out.
We, we do. I say this last meeting, I'm just gonna say it again. Under the current policy, we can make appointments now.
Really?
We can advertise appointments now. What I'm concerned about is we've, and I don't, I don't want to personalize it, but I'm saying that if we're going to be broad and open and trying to make sure that we are being inclusive, and if we want to fill vacancies, and we want to have the diversities, and we want to do the analysis of where we are, let's do the analysis, let's see what the vacancies are, let's make modifications of the policy, let's promote the opportunity and make appointments in, in August. For those that are, I mean, this is just my view. For those, for those that are, in the case of existing appointments that are expiring, like you have with CAC and you may have with some, some others, it's a, it's a different dynamic of somebody who's in a position and is trying to figure out what they do versus trying to open the opportunity for someone who may not even know about the opportunities to serve.
So Madam Chair, if I can, Mr. Jordan, see if we can have a compromise on this. So what if we went to July? What if we deferred to July as far as appointments? But we, in, but in the month of June, we go ahead and take these policies, get them approved, as far as the changes that we're talking about in the appointment piece?
That's what I thought we were doing.
No, I'm just saying. And then July, we come in and.
Respectfully, I turn to my notes, you know, and I take a lot of notes during the meeting. Vote on policy recommendations at June board meeting.
Yeah, so we're gonna do that, and then, you know.
I, I just, we, I don't, I don't disagree with what you're saying, Mr. Jordan. I just feel that we, we have, we have, we have something that has come up from the CAC chair that has been brought to our attention, that is an area of need to fill. And then we have an individual who has put forth an interest, we have the vacancy, they're willing to serve. I agree, if we have vacancies, put it out there, but the process hasn't been very fluid to begin with. And so this is just a step in that direction. And no promises are being made to individuals to say, you know, once you're in as the vacancy person, this is your technically start of your three-year term, or whatever the term is that we grant them. It's just to say, all right, we got a vacancy, you're interested, let's put it out there. And then we're in the process of aligning our policies so that we can have a better way to, to put forth the recommendations of the advisory committees.
Madam Chair, in the essence of time, and if we're, can we just do a general consensus about placing the names on the, we already know we're gonna do the policies, but just amongst the board, just to get a general consensus about placing this as an item on the agenda, on, for the 15th? And then we can, I mean, because it's seven.
What's this?
It's a temporary.
I mean, we want to talk about the, the two recommendations of applications that have come in, one for SHAC and one for GEAC.
CAC.
I mean, CAC.
And I believe, if you're gonna do that, so I believe there's one for GEAC as well.
Yeah. What, make sure they send it to Ms. Jackson so that she gets the application, and then it gets out to the board so that they can review it.
I'm sorry, it is.
Okay.
The GEAC one's on there.
GEAC's already in here. I have a list that came in for GEAC. So I, I personally don't have a problem putting it on the June agenda.
Anybody else have an issue with it? Okay.
I'm okay with it.
Okay. All right. All right. Well, thank you very much, everyone. This was a very good meeting. Can I have a motion to go into closed session? And then we'll do our motion, and we'll get a break, and then go into closed session.
I, I just have a real quick question. So today, I also thought we were gonna get, are we gonna get an update on the later start times? I know Mr. Richter was here.
Um.
Wasn't he?
Not on the agenda.
I thought we were, I thought we were. I thought that's what we were doing today.
He had a flight.
You know what?
ED, educational planning. I just want to be sure that we're staying on top of, you know, getting the updates on that.
Did he have a presentation on, under board docs?
No, not a formal presentation, but he was here to discuss what the next steps were.
Okay.
But he had a flight, so.
Okay. I didn't get a note or anything, I paused, so, well.
He noticed those in the future.
Yeah.
And, and reminder or something, so we're not sitting here now.
Apologies. We'll get back to it.
Well, I mean, we've, we've talked about it in our meeting, so I just assumed that.
And I, we'll, we'll discuss it, how we're gonna reschedule it for agenda planning. Okay.
All right, so can I make a motion to go into closed session?
Second. Ms. Martin, second.
Move that members, members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for: A, discussion or consideration of the performance of specific officers and employees of the Norfolk Public Schools pursuant to subsection 1 of the above cited code section. The subjects of this section of the motion are regular personnel docket of this date and discussion of personnel action to be taken in connection with specific employees. B, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members, consultants, or attorneys pertaining to actual or probable litigation or other specifically legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection 7 and 8 of the above cited code section. The subject of this section of the motion refers to advice of counsel as needed regarding legal issues related to the personnel matters identified above. And the vote, Ms. Basine?
Aye.
Ms. Campson?
Aye.
Mr. Clanton?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye. We're gonna take a brief recess and meet back in the board room at 7:15.
Come back here.
No, 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 the other room.
Oh, the conference room.